All right, let's get going. Good evening, everyone. This is the public hearing for the Fall Special Town Meeting for Sherburne, Massachusetts on September 27th, 2023. Great to see everybody. Nice to see a big, big group for the, for the public hearing. I know everybody's been reading in the newspaper about, at least if you follow Washington DC news like I do, having worked there for many years, about the government shutdown. I think we're okay tonight. Don't think there'll be a shutdown tonight. I think we'll be able to proceed and get all our, get all our business done. So I'm Dan Sickel. I am Chair of, Chair of the Advisory Committee, and I will call the meeting to order. And of course, our agenda and plan for the evening is to consider the warrant articles that will be up at the Fall Special Town Meeting on October 17. My hope and expectation is that we'll complete all our business tonight. I think with five articles to discuss, that's a very doable and reasonable goal. If something unexpected happens, if something unexpected happens, I did post for a continuation tomorrow night at seven on the, on the town's website in the usual place, though I really don't expect that we'll need that. And of course, we're holding this hearing remotely on Zoom pursuant with Massachusetts law. And I'll just alert everyone as standard practice, the meeting is being recorded. So let me just read the agenda and we'll do a quick roll call just of, of advisory members. Just to get that on board and see if there are any changes to the agenda. So as I said, the plan is to consider the warrant articles that will be up for consideration at the Special Fall Town Meeting on October 17. And that's, that's really the topic on the agenda. And the warrant, the language of the warrants posted on the town's website, five articles as posted there. The first is about nomination papers for town, people running for town office. Second is about the dog fund. Third is about the Maple and Washington Roundabout. The fourth is concerns Meadowbrook Commons, and the fifth concerns the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. Does anybody on advisory have any changes to propose to that agenda? Hearing none. Let me, um, let me just take a quick roll call to confirm that everybody's good with that agenda. So I'm just gonna do this in alphabetical order here. Wasim? Great. Mike Flanagan? You're muted. I can't hear you. If you want to do a thumbs up?
Present, yep.
Perfect. Paul Plott?
Yeah, I'm present. Hi, Dan.
Great. Nora Lynch? Good with the agenda?
Thank you.
Yep. Shelley Subber?
Impressive.
Yep. Natalie Weir?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Mike Winner?
Yes.
Great. Penn Young?
A verbal thumbs up.
Thank you. And I'm an I as well. All right. So we're good with the agenda. So let me just do a little bit of housekeeping before we get going.
Dan, do you mind if I actually just announce the Select Board is also in session and we continued from our prior meeting?
That is perfect, because that was my next agenda I'd have.
All right. Well, I didn't want to jump the guy, but we have four members here, myself, Steven Si, who's the Select Board Clerk, Marian Neutra, and Paul Dorensis. And we also have the Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette, and Assistant Town Administrator Raider Diane Morris here. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's perfect. That was just what I had in mind next. Is there any other committee or board that has a quorum and wants to start a meeting, a concurrent meeting? Just, I didn't think there would be, but just to check.
Dan?
Absolutely.
We posted, but I don't see other members of planning. So we'll just go with it and then, okay?
That sounds just fine. And if you do, um, if you do, um, if you do, uh, end up with a quorum and you want to officially start a meeting, just jump in and just jump in and do that.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. So with the agenda approved, let's do one more thing, which is let's officially open the public hearing. And just to make that super official, let me entertain a motion from advisory to officially open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great. Okay. And let's just do a quick roll call on that. So we're all good on opening the hearing. Wasim?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Flanagan?
Aye.
Paul Plott?
Aye.
Nora Lynch?
Aye.
Uh, Shelley Subber?
Aye.
Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Winner?
Aye.
And Penn Young?
Aye.
And I'm I as well. All right. So our public hearing is officially now open. I did just want to take a minute to acknowledge the service of advisory members. You've all heard their names on those couple of roll calls, so I won't read everybody's name again. But it's a big commitment to be on advisory and just a big thank you from me to everybody who stepped up and agreed to either join new this year or continuing on from past years. And for anyone who's on the call who isn't familiar with the role of advisory, the committee is really intended to serve as kind of the representative of taxpayers in the community in town. And our official role is to advise town meeting on all articles of business that come before town meeting. And typically, when we have a spring town meeting, the committee will have spent a good chunk of the year reviewing budgets and, and thinking about the, the specifics of town finances. This is a little different. This is a little different as a, as, as, as a fall town meeting. I will just mention that the committee did meet with all the proponents of articles a couple of weeks ago and had a chance to really dig in and kind of try to think through the logic of each of the articles as each member of advisory was coming to a view on how to, how to think about, how to think about the articles. And of course, the reason for the Special Town Meeting, rather than just waiting until the spring, is some of these articles are particularly time sensitive. And so there was a desire by the Select Board to deal with some of these, to take up some of these articles now, rather than waiting until the time of the typical spring town meeting. So procedures for the meeting, just again, for anyone who hasn't been at a public hearing, isn't familiar with how this goes, we'll consider the warrant articles in order, in the order on the warrant. And I anticipate using a consent agenda for Articles One and Two. They're bylaw housekeeping articles that are, are rather routine and don't seem likely to elicit significant comment or raise much discussion. And I think we need to streamline the start, start front end of the meeting if we just do those as a consent agenda. And we'll come back to that in a minute. So for each article that we consider, here's how the discussion will go. Proponent or the explainer of the article will have five minutes. And then we'll open things up for the first round of public comments. And we'll have a two-minute time limit per, per comment, per commenter, and would just ask that as people comment, if a point's already been made, doesn't need to be made again, or if you just want to reiterate that you agree with something that was said before, please just do that as, hey, I want to concur with what, what Jane said before, or, or whoever, whoever it was, just so that we don't, we can try to avoid, avoid a lot of, a lot of repetition. After that, and I, and I would just say, if you want to be recognized to speak in the public comment period, please just use the Zoom Raise Hand function. If for any reason that's not working on your computer, you can do one of these and I'll do my best to see it, but with the number of people on the call, I might not see you right away. So if you can, use the, use the Raise Hand function in, in Zoom. And when you speak, please start by stating your name and your, and your address, just so that we get that, get that on the record. So after that first round of public comments, we will have a period of advisory discussion. So an opportunity for the members of the advisory committee to discuss, talk about, ask any questions of the proponent or explainer, and gather any additional information that advisory would like after having heard from first round of public comments. And in that, in that session, I'm going to ask advisory members to kind of indicate their thinking on the article, which I think will signal to everyone on the call, not necessarily what the final vote would be, but how, how advisory members are thinking about each of the articles that we'll be considering. Following that, we will have a second public comment period. Again, two-minute time limit. Again, use the Raise Hand function. And please state your name and address. And during this public comment period, Select Board will, will, will report, Jeff will report, Jeff Waldron will report for the Select Board, what their vote was. And I think on one of these items, they're, they're gonna do a vote in the meeting here tonight to, to kind of reassess one of the, one of the, one of the articles. And then after that second public comment period, we'll have an advisory voting session where members of advisory can make a motion, either for favorable action, no action, with any, uh, any kind of conditions that would be added beyond that. And advisory will vote, and that vote will be the official recommendation that goes into the advisory report that will be written up shortly after the meeting, and will get mailed out to every household, every household in town. And I think that's about it for meeting procedures. Yeah. So before we go on, um, any questions, comments on procedure? Everybody's good with how we're gonna proceed tonight? Okay, very good. So, um, so let's, let's jump in and get going on warrant articles. So as I said, I was hoping that we could consider Articles One and Two together as a consent agenda. And to do that, I would need a motion from an advisory member to do that in a second and a quick roll call vote, if there's an advisory member who would be inclined to make a motion in that direction. And if not, then we'll do each one individually.
So moved.
Great, Shelley. Thanks. Um, is there a second? Uh, who, who was that that did a second, just so I can get my notes?
Uh, me and Wasim.
Great. Okay. Great. Okay. So let's do a quick vote on whether we'll proceed with a consent agenda. So, uh, Wasim?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Flanagan?
Aye.
Uh, Paul Plott?
Aye.
Nora Lynch Smith?
Aye.
Uh, Shelley Subber?
Aye.
Natalie Weir?
Aye.
Mike Winner?
Aye.
Okay. Penn Young?
Aye.
And I'm I as well. And after this, that I think I've said everybody's full name enough times, I'll just go with first names when you do roll call votes going, going forward. All right. So we're doing this as a consent agenda. And our presenter for Articles One and Two is Town Clerk Jackie Morris. Jackie, the floor is yours for five minutes.
Hi, thank you very much. So basically, the reason that I asked that these two articles be on the, on this Special Town Meeting warrant is because both of them are in effect before the April Town Meeting. The dog fund, actually, the money is going into the general fund, so we don't use the dog fund anymore. So in order to be compliant with the law, we need to remove it. Nomination papers are taken out in March. And the nomination papers, in order to be compliant with the law, we need to pass the article, and it basically will allow people to pick up nomination papers and have four days before they have to submit them for certification and signatures. So that's all.
Thanks, Jackie. You still have like, you know, four minutes and 20 seconds. Okay. Again, pretty, as, as, as I guess I like to call these housekeeping articles. So with Jackie having finished her presentation, let me open the first public comment period. If anybody would like to make a comment on either Article One or Article Two. And again, easiest for me if you use the Raise Hand function. If that doesn't work, wave, unmute yourself and say something so I don't miss anybody. All right. Hearing no comments, I will close the first public comment period. And let me open the advisory discussion period. Anyone on advisory who has questions for Jackie, comments about this? So I would normally spin through and ask everyone to state a view, but I'm guessing everybody's good with these. So let me say if anybody isn't or has any concerns, to speak up now. All right. So I think for everybody watching, that can be taken as a, as confirmation that everyone on advisory at this point is leaning in favor of supporting both of these, both of these articles. Um, Jeff, do you want to, um, let me, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Let me then, hearing nothing else from advisory, let me close the advisory discussion period. And let me open the second public comment period. And Jeff, the Select Board Chair, if you'd like to report on Select Board.
And so you're, I was multitasking. You're doing Articles One, Two, and Three, or just One and Two?
One and Two.
Yeah. So we voted five to zero in favor of Articles One and Two.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anybody else, other public comment time, anybody else want to offer anything on this? So this is confirming my forecast that there wouldn't be a lot of discussion on this and we wouldn't need to take a lot of time. Okay, seeing nothing, I will close the second public comment period. And we'll move to the advisory voting session. So I would welcome a motion from advisory member for how, how we want to handle and what we want to recommend on these two articles. Paul?
I'd like to make a motion to move favorable action.
Thanks, Paul. Just keep in my notes here. Um, and is there a second?
A second.
Thanks. Okay. And let's, let's do a quick vote. Wasim?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Flanagan?
Aye.
Uh, Paul Plott?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
Uh, Shelley?
Aye.
Natalie?
Aye.
Mike W?
Aye.
Penn?
Aye.
And I'm I as well. All right. So advisory will make a, recommend favorable action on Articles One and Two. All right. So let's move on to Article Three. This is the one concerning the Roundabout at Maple and Washington. And Sean Colleen, DPW Director is gonna take us through that. Sean, the floor is yours for five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay.
Uh, that's perfect.
That's showing up right?
Yeah, it looks good.
I'm not sure why the other screen just went blank, but, um, so this article does a couple of things. One, I'll, I'll just go through the Roundabout. The, the, the basis of this article is to reappropriate funds that were from previous town meetings, which is going to allow us to construct the roadway improvements that are now completely designed. We funded the engineering a, a year and a half ago now. In, in the 2022 Spring Town Meeting, we funded the engineering and we've been working on it since. That's complete, and that's the basis of the design that we're gonna move forward with. The, we're happy to say that there's gonna be no property impacts. That was a big concern for decades that if we ever built a roundabout, we'd have to do land taking from the church or from one of the abutters. And that's not gonna be the case. So the benefits you can see, increased pedestrian safety, there's, there's some very dangerous crosswalks there and the lack of sidewalks to, to two of the corners, really three of the corners. Because crossing Washington Street in front of Town Hall is not really a safe place to do. Uh, none of it's ADA compliant right now, obviously. So that's gonna help that. Trapper coming, kind of goes without saying. The initial cost, you, you see the engineering, that's basically all been paid for. You'll see that in the next slide, but it was, again, it was from the previous town meeting article. Uh, so that's gonna break up to some engineering during the construction. The construction, and then a, a healthy contingency that we think should cover us. So 1.4 total design and, and contingency. It's, it's worth noting that we have a contractor under contract now. So we're not gonna go out to bid. That contract covers everything that's gonna take place there so that, once we have all the funding in place, the, the town can move forward with, with a couple of other votes from the Select Board, to use some of the other funding. So the, the project funding breakdown here, the 150, again, that was the previous town meeting article. The Mastodot Complete Streets, that was an award we got six or eight months ago. So we, we have that money committed from the state. The Small Town Road Improvement Enhancement Public Safety, that we call that a strap grant, that's 500,000. We have a very, very high confidence level that we're gonna, we're gonna have that money in hand very soon. And then the Chapter 90 Fiscal 24 money is unspent right now. We already basically have that in the bank. It's not committed to anything else at the moment. And then what we're asking for is these two, the, the two next lines, Annual Town Meeting 14, there was transfer station paving, there was money left over from that. That was a previous capital appropriation. And the Pine Hill Access Road, which came in basically on budget. So the entire contingency left unspent. It's customary that those would get re-appropriated, rather than just disappear. The, the money's kind of hanging out there. It's money that's already been borrowed. So it needs a town meeting vote. And that's what this article is for, to reappropriate those towards this project. So again, we're not asking the taxpayers for any new money. That's already committed money. It just wasn't spent on the projects that are now complete. Here's just a schematic of, of what we're looking at doing. Again, this design is well-vetted. And you can see that there's no, there's no land taking. We get very close to the stone wall on Washington and Maple, but we're clear of it and sidewalks on all four corners. And here's just, there's too much verbiage here, but, you know, different history of, of local area. I think most people recognize the Norfolk Roundabouts as, as something similar to what we're building. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Sean. That's great. Okay. I was just gonna say on share screen. Okay. So that is some background on Article Three and is, as, and the, both the what would be done and also a bit on the financing. With, as Sean said, the high likelihood that the town will get that $500,000 state, state grant, which would be a big help in financing. So let's open up the public comment period. And if anybody would like to, first public comment period, if anybody would like to offer a comment, view, ask a question. Lawrence Rubin, looks like you have your hand up. Go ahead. Two minutes. And please name an address.
Yes. Lanny Rubin, 26 Elliott Street, Sherburne. My question is, does this project improve the visibility over the crest of the hill at all? Or is this just an expedient to sort of slow the traffic down without improving visibility?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, go ahead.
To the best of our ability, it does improve visibility. There is a, there is a cut in the asphalt. It doesn't take out every bit of the hill. That'd be a pretty severe cut, but there, there is a cut to level out the, the grades as you come up over the top of the hill on Washington Street. So it does do that. It's certain, and it most certainly slows the traffic down because the traffic approaching that intersection is going way too fast for a roundabout. So it does both things. Thank you.
Thanks, Lanny. Um, anybody who else for a public comment? Mr. Wang, and I'm sorry, I'm not gonna get your first name right. If you can help us out on that.
Yes, my name is Deishan. Good evening, everyone. I'm, I'm from Two South Hill Lane. And yeah. So, uh, yes, I just want to know, may I ask, what is the timeline about the project? So how long does it take? Yeah.
Oh, thanks, Deishan. Sean, go ahead, please.
So the, the intent is to start this, basically, the last day of school, after the last day of school, we really can't close this intersection down while the buses are going. Because we intend, we intend to close the intersection, close Maple Street, close Washington Street, and detour all the traffic. So it's basically July and August.
July.
There may be some work in June, but we won't close it until school's out.
That's true. Yeah, thank you.
Richard Robinson, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know. I'm not seeing a raised hand.
And, and just name an address, please, just.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street.
Thanks.
Is the, is the traffic on 16 in either direction, both directions, gonna be required to yield to traffic in the intersection the way that standard rotaries are? Or is, are they gonna have the right of way over Maple and, and Sanger traffic? Thanks.
Go ahead, Sean.
Standard Rotary Roundabout is any, when you're in the intersection, when you're in the roundabout, you have the right of way. So the Washington Street doesn't have any more right of way than Maple or Sanger as you go around.
Thanks.
Who else on public has a comment or question? Lanny? Just, just hang on, hang on one second. Let me just, before I come back to you, let me just see if there's anybody else who wanted to get in with a comment or question. Um, Melinda O'Neil? I'll come back to you, Lanny.
Hold on, sorry. There it is. Um, hi, Melinda O'Neil, A Fun Road. Sean, any chance that because we're replacing some of that pavement with landscaping, greenery, that there's like a little inroad to some stormwater? What's, what's the word I'm trying to look for? Management money or recognition or anything along those lines? I know it's like a teeny amount, but I'm just wondering if anything counts. Do you know what I'm asking?
We, the net result will be better stormwater management than we currently have. We're certainly not gonna get any accolades for it. We're just, we, we have to treat the stormwater better than we're treating it now. There's almost no stormwater infrastructure in that intersection now. Most of it heads down Maple Street or Washington Street, some down Sanger. We basically are required to capture the increase because there will be a slight increase, obviously. There's more pavement. And we will treat it better than we're treating basically what's going to the wetlands now.
Thanks, Melinda.
Thanks.
Anybody else before we come back for a second round?
Sure, I'll say something.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, please, Paul.
What hasn't been mentioned, and I think we all know it, but maybe not all the voters know it, is that this has been a very dangerous intersection. And we have quite a record of accidents and injuries over quite a period of time. And it is our responsibility as a town and as a government to provide for the public. And we did have engineers look at this, and they did look at the feasibility and so on. As part of that process, it's pretty clear this will be a safer intersection for everyone. We talked a little bit about pedestrians. But beyond pedestrians, it'll be safer for the drivers. Those of us who go through the intersection regularly, it can be pretty scary trying to cross to Maple Street or exit from Maple Street with the traffic going back and forth on With the traffic going back and forth on on Route uh, sixteen. This will greatly improve all of that and make it safer for all of us. So it's it's something we all want to support and urge everybody to support.
Thanks, Paul. Um, Lanny Rubin, back to you.
Yeah, um. I mean, the main problem is visibility, really, over the crest of the hill. That's always been the, I think, the essence of the accidents that have occurred. Speeding cars on Washington Street and not being visible. Did anybody ever think they could just solve this really by putting up a couple fancy mirrors? That looked over the crest of the hill, that people coming up into Maple Street could simply look up and see exactly what was coming. It seems to me a small roundabout is not a particularly uh, traffic friendly thing. People tend to get confused about right of ways when they're too small, um. You know, just a couple more questions.
Interesting, there's um. There's a fair amount of accidents I've been to, and I I'm sure both chiefs would would chime in if they need to. That are actually caused by the Sanger Street people crossing. Now, the people sitting at Sanger Street have the best visibility in the in the intersection. They can see the people coming up Washington Street. Maple Street, but there's a dance there that not everyone really does real well, which is the person pulling on a Maple Street trying to take a left is blind. He can't see anything, mirror or not. He can't see and he doesn't know the car is coming up Washington Street. The person in Sanger Street gets in front of him. Everybody gets de-mowed. Everybody that's looked at this has said either stop everybody or put them through a roundabout, slow them down. And if there's accidents in a roundabout, they're gonna be ten, twelve, thirteen miles an hour. So we're not gonna have injuries. We have injuries almost every time somebody gets hit there and it's it's not something we need to keep pondering on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Um, Weiyang Shi.
Uh, yes, um. Uh, Weiyang Shi, I live on Coolidge Street, one twenty-five Coolidge Street. Uh, last report we got from the police is ninety-five percent of the accident happening in Sherburne is happening on Coolidge Street. It's streets, people speeding, it's like, if you guys. I wonder if you do something for that that road, can we do something for the Coolidge Street? Like, we definitely have a higher accident rate than any other, anywhere elsewhere.
So th- thanks for that. Um, that's been a subject of some considerable discussion. Sean, do you want to say a word about that or?
I'd love to. That's not actually true. The the highest accident rate in town is is this intersection. The second highest accident rate in town over the past couple decades was Lake and Elliot. Coolidge isn't even close. Um. I'm not sure where that data came from, but Sanger Street, Maple Street, Washington Street is the highest accident rate in the town.
We got the report from the police station, like every other couple days, we see some guy run off the road into the woods.
Yeah, I I just, I just wanted to highlight, and again, somebody else may be able to fill in. That I know the select board has discussed the Coolidge Street situation at some length, and I think has, you know, started an effort with the uh, with Chief Galvin and Chief Ward to take a serious look at that and try and understand, uh, you know, what could be done, what steps could be taken to uh, to 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 ameliorate that. Um, that that being said, um, it's a great issue to bring up. It's not really what we're focusing on tonight. Um, but it's a good reminder that, you know, that effort that I think is underway. Um, you know, we'll hopefully make some progress on that. Jeff, you unmuted. Did you want to say something on that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, I don't know if you attended. We held a a special meeting with the residents of Coolidge Street with the Public Safety Committee. And so the Public Safety Committee is um working on this and they have, you've probably seen, they've got some a measurement devices, we're measuring speeds and uh, looking at it. They have a number of measures they're considering, so. This, this is definitely uh, uh, not being ignored, uh, way in.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else with a comment for first round of public comments? All right, not seeing any. I'll close. Um, thank you, Sean, for, thank you, Sean, for that, or maybe more as we keep going here. Um, I will close the first public comment and open the Advisory Committee Discussion Period. Uh, anybody on advisory with questions, comments? Concerns? Yeah, Nora.
Hi, Sean. Um. Hi, Dan. Um. The five hundred thousand, now, when will that, do you think will get? You'll know before the town vote or and what happens if you don't get that on the off chance? I know it's a small chance, but I have to ask the question.
I think we're gonna know very soon. Uh, probably before town meeting. And on the off chance that we didn't get that. We still need to reappropriate that that money. I'll remind everyone that, you know, in the first presentations, Jeremy had had presented kind of two different scenarios of funding. Um, one of which utilized a couple of years of chapter ninety funding. And annual town meeting funds that we have that we that are still not committed. So we we could actually pull it off. Um, that would take several different select board votes. Because they they generally vote on the use of the chapter ninety. So if if we didn't get it, we we still should be appropriating, reappropriating this money. And then it would kind of just leave us in limbo. If we were to vote this down. We'd have money that's still sitting out there that can't be spent. Uh, that's that's basically been borrowed already and uh and money that the state is committed in in the in the uh Complete Streets funding that that's just sitting there and is committed. And then we wouldn't be able to kind of fill the gap. So in with the absence of of the five hundred thousand, we may still fill the gap, but uh, we're pretty confident we're gonna get that.
And I have another question. I have two more, actually. The pedestrian walkways, it looks like there are three pedestrian crosswalks and is that gonna be? You know, if people are coming around the rotary and somebody wants to cross, I mean, are there gonna be lights there or, you know, flashing lights or is there, are you gonna continue with sidewalk?
Yeah, a couple of them have lights and I apologize. I mean, we didn't, I, on the screen, I didn't put up all of the um design phase, but but there is, um, I believe on the Washington Street side. And again, at each um, crosswalk, you have the intermediate spot where you can stop. With the traffic, but keep in mind, you're crossing a road now that people are going thirty-five through. Uh, they won't be going anywhere close to that as they approach the roundabout.
Okay.
You have one more, you said you had a couple other questions?
And then I just, um, I noticed with three crosswalks, but there's gonna be four, one going on Maple Street also?
No, there's, there's three, because that corner very close um, on the Maple Washington Street side, that corner is very close to that stone wall. So the sidewalk doesn't wrap that corner. And that would basically lead to a sidewalk that doesn't really go anywhere.
Okay. And then the last, the last one I have is the inside of that, um, the rotary. How is that gonna look like or?
So it'll the the very inside is some type of landscape planter, but it has to be low planting so that you have visibility through. Um, and then the the basically outer ring of the island um, is stamped concrete or stamped asphalt. To to mimic the look of cobbles or brick, but not be them, because we need to jump up on that and plow that. Um, they used to make them out of cobbles, but they're a nightmare in the winter. The the trucks need to be able to drive over that inside because a tractor trailer can't make the roundabout without mounting the inside. Cars rotate around without it.
Okay, just wondering about the general aesthetic, but okay, thank you.
Thanks, Norris. Thanks, Sean. Um, anybody else on advisory with questions, comments, and then we'll do a quick spin around to just kind of get a sense of how everybody on advisory is viewing this article? All right, so let's just do a quick spin through, just kind of get a sense of how people are thinking about this before we get to the second um, public comment period. Um, so Wassim, let me start with, uh, let me start with you, if I could.
Um, I am in support of this article, uh. Definitely to appropriate the funds. And that implies that I'm also in support of this project, even if we don't get the five hundred K, right? I know that's not the scope of today's discussion, but that's where I stand because I do agree with Paul. That's, this is a very unsafe intersection and and we we need, you know, as representatives of the town to to um work to make it safer. Make the town safer for everyone.
All right, thanks, Wassim. Um, Natalie? What are you thinking?
I'm one hundred percent in support of this rotary.
Okay, thanks. Um. Uh, Mike Flanagan?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in support of the rotary. Looked at by a number of folks. Um, I think it's you know, something has to be done there, so I support it.
Okay, Paul. Paul?
I agree, so I agree with the other advisory members. I'm I'm very supportive as well. Thanks.
Okay, um, Shelley?
I'm also in favor of the reappropriation of funds for the project.
Okay, um, Mike W.
I am also in favor of reappropriation for many of the same reasons.
Ben?
Also in favor of the reappropriation.
All right, and and I'm I'm leaning in the same direction that everyone else has, uh, everyone else has spoken. Okay, so I think I'm gonna close the advisory discussion period. Again, the idea that is if anybody in the public wants to, anybody who's on, you know, on the call wants to uh, offer a, offer a view or a perspective or more questions. Now you kind of got a sense of where members of advisory are coming from, which, you know, may influence the types of comments people would want to offer. So close the advisory discussion period. Let me uh, open the uh, second public comment period and Jeff, let me pass it to you to say anything you want to say about select board perspective on this.
Yeah, the select board is also similarly in favor and we voted five to zero in favor of Article Three.
Okay, thank you. Uh. All right, so then open for public comment. Um, Richard, Richard Robinson.
Thank you. I I wish I could raise my hand. I don't know why I can't. Uh, Sean, have you uh, looked at how this is gonna affect the sixteen twenty-seven merge during the morning commute? Uh, I don't know how to imagine it's gonna change it, but it might.
Uh, we have looked at it some. This is actually more influenced by the sixteen twenty-seven and the and the combo of the traffic. Ironically, the train picking up speed over the past couple of years has helped. Because the it it takes them less time to get through downtown and and queue the traffic up. It it has less effect on it, but it will help reduce the speed coming out of that intersection and the speed headed into that intersection. Because right now during the day. People cruise through that intersection and easily thirty. Probably more headed e- headed east. And they roll down the hill at the split past Nora's office. Going as fast as they want towards the split though. You know, they'll essentially be leaving this intersection at twenty miles an hour tops. So it it should help the traffic heading into the split, just reducing the speed, not really the queuing. There's not much we can do about the amount of traffic that runs on the combined road.
Okay, thanks. Um, Melinda O'Neal. Go ahead, Melinda.
Hi, Melinda O'Neal, Afun Road. I just want to say thank you. And I also just want to make the comment that if you have any question about how it will work, if it's a good idea, what are the effects on the traffic and all those sort of typical, normal uh, questions you might have, just drive through the rotaries in Norfolk. The first time I went through that rotary, I was like, my God, I wish we had one of these things in Sherburne. They're aesthetically more pleasing, they clearly slow down the traffic, they're easy to navigate. If you've never been in a rotary your entire life, it's very clear what to do and how to do it. I've never had a problem there. And just a few weeks ago, I watched an accident at this site that we're talking about today and nobody was driving eight million miles an hour. They just don't know how to like stop, wait, as you know, I think Sean referred to it as a dance. Um, and yeah, I think that's a hundred percent it and I I, you know, lived in this town for fifty-six years and my expectation is that this will uh, be a wonderful improvement. I'm looking forward to it.
All right, thanks, Melinda. Anybody else on public comment? All right, I will close the second public comment period and let's do advisory voting. Uh. I think we all have a pretty good sense of where this is going, but to make it official, uh, would entertain a motion for uh, this article.
I move to favorable action.
Thanks, Shelley. Just getting my uh, notes set here. All right, um, so let's just do a quick roll call to make it official. Uh, Wassim?
Hi.
Favorable in, for favorable action. Uh, Mike Flanagan?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi, favorable action.
Nora?
Hi.
Shelley?
Hi.
Uh, Natalie?
Hi.
Uh, Mike, Mike W.
Hi.
Ben?
Hi.
And I'm I as well, so nine, nine zero um, on that one. Okay, very good. Um, okay, so that gets us through Article Three. Um, seven forty-seven, averaging fifteen minutes an article through three articles, so we'll see how that goes going forward. Uh, so on to Article Four. Uh, this would be Meadow Brook and Chris Owen, Chair of the Planning Board, is going to take us through that. Chris, the floor is yours for uh, five minutes.
Thank you very much, Dan. Um, this article is written, has the unanimous support of the planning board. Um, under our bylaws, section five point six of the Sherburne zoning bylaw provides for an EA district. Every proposal for the rezoning of land to an EA district must have a preliminary development plan presented to and passed by town meeting. That occurred originally in two thousand seventeen. Um, the next step would be a special permit application with a final development plan. The planning board is the special permit granting authority for this. At that time, we would hold public hearings. We would discuss issues including but not limiting to survey of land, grading and drainage, density, open space, landscaping, affordable um, units, utilities, and a whole host of other things. Um, the planning board may, in its discretion, permit deviations from the preliminary development plan with two exceptions. The special permit may not allow an increase in density, nor shall it permit an increase greater than ten percent of the total floor area. In two thousand seventeen, a preliminary development plan was presented um, with an article to rezone that land on Coolidge to EA. The article that is being presented is only a request to increase the floor area by twenty point five percent, twenty and a half percent. Much of this is from finishing basements and converting the single units to duplexes. Um, that is really the only issue that's before us with this article. The other issues that have been raised, I'll quickly address. This is not a zoning article and there is no requirement for the planning board to hold a public hearing on this. Noncompliance with design standards between the affordable and market rate units um, is addressed under section five point six point eight. And I'm just gonna read it. After issuance of any special permit, the select board shall make application for certification that the units count toward the town's statutory obligations under chap- um, under chapter forty B of the General Laws of the Commonwealth. So there was a question regarding would these units count? It's mandatory under our bylaw that the select board makes sure that it counts and the state approves it before the project goes forward. The last issue that has been raised is the number of affordable units. So the plan from two thousand seventeen had seven affordable units. In two thousand twenty, Sherburne passed an Affordable Housing Bylaw, which would mandate for this project, ten affordable units. So if the special permit were applied for today, the planning board would require ten affordable units. Now. It went back and forth, I guess, at the select board meeting that they wanted to put this wording in the bylaw saying they're gonna be held to ten affordable units. There are ways to change this. Um, you know, within our own bylaw, we could do, um, there's a few lines that if the town decided we could change it to, I mean, we could change it to, I mean, I think personally fifteen percent is a little too high. Would I change the bylaw just for a specific project? No, this project may not even happen for a year, two years, three years. So for us to mandate a number of affordable units in this bylaw, basically, all they're looking for is an increase in square footage of the units. What, you know, what you could put in there is you could say the bylaw, I mean, the the permit would have to comply with zoning bylaws. That's going to happen anyhow, but if that puts more people at ease, that would be fine. I don't think it's necessary. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Stick around. I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Do my best.
And 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 so on. So let me open the first public comment period. And let me ask people again to either use the raise hand function or do it the old fashioned way. Paul Durensis, go ahead.
Hi. At the select board meeting, I said then and I would say now that I think a sixty seven unit project that only has seven affordable units doesn't do enough for affordable housing. And where they are asking us to waive the square footage requirements and give them a little bonus. I see that as the perfect opportunity for us to get a little bit of bonus on the number of affordable units. They they need this to pass town meeting. And so I've indicated my support for this is there, provided that they comply with the zoning bylaws of the town and provide at least ten. I actually would like to see fifteen, twenty, maybe thirty affordable housing units because it's affordable housing that we need in this town. We don't need more luxury buildings in this town. We need affordable housing. And if that's the purpose behind this and that's what our goal is, then we should we should be advocating. And so that's why I think leaving it just to town meeting taking its vote without securing an agreement in advance is is an opportunity wasted. So I would like to to stick to what the select board voted, which was to support and Jeff were reporting on this, but there was an amendment. And the amendment said, we support this with the condition that it comply with the zoning bylaw of the town. It'll be at least ten.
All right, thanks, Paul. Other, other comments?
Bob Rosenthal, one hundred Hollow Street.
Didn't didn't see you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I completely agree with the prior commenter about asking for fifteen affordable housing units. It's it's time that we really stepped up the way we need to step up.
Thanks. Anybody else? Leon C, you're up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm we are see I'm on one twenty five Coolidge Street. My concern is that's such big project. What's the impact to our school system? Like, how much tax you're going to collect from each unit? Because I know twenty one thousand per student. That's what's cost go to Sherborne Dover. Like, that's five, five million plus, like, five million dollar. Remove the what's twenty five percent from the state and the federal, plus the tax, you have three million gap.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question. Do you have a plan to prepare, like, how to handle that?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Thanks on that. Let me just say a couple of quick things, and then I see Chris has his hand up and Mary Neutro, who I think was going to talk about some of those issues with respect to the next warrant article. Because I think you're gonna hear, I think, the estimates of how many kids would be new school kids would be would come. I I think perhaps your estimate's on the high side, in particular for the Meadow Brook development. It's a age restricted development. So on that one, everyone over fifty five. And and so I think likely not going to generate a lot of additional students. I think and I'll pass this on to Mary in just a second, but I think she will explain that, you know, it's the it's the other one, the Coolidge Commons with apartments that would generate some students, but I think not as many as you're suggesting. And also, I guess, you know, on the cost per student, I think the numbers and and I I know this because I was tracking the conversation on on Nextdoor. The cost per student is the average cost per student to put my, so I'm an econ prophet Wellesley, so to put on my economist hat for a second. It's not the marginal cost per student. Add one more student and you don't need to increase all the infrastructure. It's not say that it doesn't cost to add additional students, but perhaps, perhaps, you know, not as much as the average cost, but let me turn it over to Mary then, because I think she will be able to provide a bit more info on that.
Right, thanks. I was going to I expected this with the fifth warrant article, but let's talk about it briefly now. As Dan said, the real concern of perhaps more students is much, should be much more focused on the Coolidge Crossing apartment complex. It's not age restricted. It's one hundred and twenty apartments. And certainly, there could be some kids in there. The original developer took regional data and estimated, given the fact that almost most, the great majority of those apartments are one and two bedroom apartments. They're small. The numbers of school age kids are not likely to be large. In fact, given regional data, they estimated that maybe thirty six students would be added to Pine Hill and the junior high school. So I was concerned when I saw Willie's figures on Nextdoor. Excuse me, Willie, I did follow up on that. So I talked to the the accountant at the Pine Hill School and who also knows the economies of the regional schools. And I asked her, how how much would it cost the town to add thirty six students even to Pine Hill alone? And her answer was nothing. Because as Dan Sitchell said, you don't calculate the cost of one new student by taking the current cost of schools and dividing by the number of students. There's a huge economy of scale. And at present, Pine Hill is below capacity. She told me that Pine Hill could add thirty six students and it would basically not cost. It would, the cost would be minimal. They would need no more teachers, no more buildings, maybe some more pencils and paper, but she thought that it was really minimal. So I think that's the best answer I was able to get. And Willie, I understand your concern because we don't want our schools overloaded. Great, they have small classes, but this actually would not overload the schools and definitely would not raise the school costs.
My concern is we are number eleven in the school ranking, so hundred twenty apartment, even just one hundred. My kids go to Pine Hill. I know exactly how many students are there. There's four hundred one. And you say there's no cost. How does that believe that?
What are you expecting the extra cost would be if there's already room for those students in the school? And they're sufficient.
Classroom is already full. Yep. It's supposed to be eighteen or nineteen kids per class. Right now it's like twenty one.
So is that a terrible thing?
I didn't buy charitable thing.
I mean, a good teacher can teach twenty one students as well as nineteen. I can tell you that the school official told me that it's not a problem. They have room for more students. In fact, they've planned for more students and the student population has fallen lately.
Okay, so let's, thanks, Marion. Let me get some other people in. And then we can we can come back to you if you want to come back on that with either more of a comment or, you know, more of a response. But Chris, you had had your hand up. Did you want to add anything?
I was going to say exactly what you said, that it's over fifty five, it's an EA, and the number of students that it's going to bring in is not going to be a great number.
Okay, thanks. So a number of other people with hands up. I earlier saw Bob Murchison, and then you may put your hand down, but Bob, you are next on my list if you want to go or if you want to wait till later, that's fine, too.
Thank you, Dan. Sure. So I was, Chris alluded to an email that I sent two weeks ago, which raised what I thought were four very significant issues. What this is really about is a preliminary development plan. And it's it's not so much about kids in schools, and I agree with Chris on the point of that there won't be many kids in the schools. But I I I'm coming before you tonight with kind of two issues that I feel very strongly about. The first is affordable housing and I think Paul and the other speaker kind of both said it very well. I'll just go on and say that, you know, our law says that we need ten percent. And I, we absolutely under the inclusionary zoning law have to have ten affordable units. If Paul wants to bring a proposal that we ask for more, I'll be in favor of that, but I I really care strongly. I'm obviously I develop in town and I understand that the town is very, very focused on its rules and its regulations. And I think just because we want this to pass so that Toll Brothers will bring water and sewer to North Sherbin, which I favor. Just because we want it to pass, we should not ignore our rules. And there are four significant problems with this preliminary development plan. I want it to pass. I would like the project to be built. And I want there to be a preliminary development plan, and I want this to go forward. But first, it needs ten affordable homes at a minimum, and Paul's idea of more is great. The site plans are inadequate. And by the way, I think I'm the only person in the room who has actually presented a preliminary development plan to town meeting. And actually, we had it passed ninety nine to one. And for the record, it was Elliot that voted no that night. But there are inadequate site plans here. It doesn't have a grading plan. It doesn't have a drainage plan. It doesn't have proposed sales sale prices. Those were in a plan that was submitted six years ago, but frankly, they've changed the the layout of the homes. Obviously, six years has passed. The sales prices are not the same. The drainage will not be the same. The grading is not the same. And I don't understand how the neighborhood, especially me, as in a butter that is surrounded on three sides by these, by this project. I don't know how I can assess what's going on without getting these. And it's not, as someone that has developed this stuff, it's not hard. You just need to go and do the work, and they could certainly do it in the time between now and town meeting. I don't believe that the design standards for for subsidized housing inventory homes are being met. It's a requirement of our law that they be met in order that they go on the S H I with, which many folks in town are very, very focused on the subsidized housing inventory. One way to get this resolved is you just go to DHCD and ask them, is this plan compliant? And I think we need to know if they build this project and it's not compliant, that's going to be a real problem. And lastly, the public hearing, it says in section five point six point three that every proposal must include a preliminary development plan when it is presented at the planning board public hearing required by said chapter forty A. I guess Chris disagrees with this, but what's the harm in the planning board having a public hearing and talking about the issues that I've raised?
If you could wrap up, you're getting
I I just like to say that I just want this to be compliant and then I'll vote for it. I want it to happen, but these four issues need to be addressed. And I don't, I don't agree with Chris that we're supposed to just kick this to the planning board and hope, you know, they take care of it for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
This is Natalie from Advisory Board. I had a question how you think the drainage might have changed over the last five years?
Dan, are you okay with my answering?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob, just a quick, if you could, just a quick, quick.
It's not, it's not the existing grading that has changed, Natalie. It's the proposed grading that's changed. When you put your houses in different places and you build a bunch of duplexes instead of single families, which is all fine for them to propose. And as I said, I'm in favor of it. But you need to show a grading plan so that people can understand kind of how this will look. So the the proposed grading plan will have changed significantly with the new layout. But you're absolutely right. The existing conditions grading plan has not changed, and that's, that's not what I'm asking for.
Okay, thanks, Bob. So to stay on that, I've got a couple of thoughts on that, but Chris, did you want to respond to any of that or?
Well, a lot of Bob's concerns would be addressed with a final development plan. I mean, I I view this as, do we want to let them increase the square footage? That that's really what this article is about, in my view. And as far as the the units being counted, again, we deal with that in our bylaw. There's a process. It's written in our, in the bylaw. And and the select board is responsible at that time of the special permit for making sure that the units would comply before anything is built.
Thanks. Thanks, Chris. Yeah, I guess I I was thinking, you know, in terms of the article that's before advisory, we before town meeting, that really what that article is asking is about the square footage. And Bob, I mean, I give you a lot of credit in the last couple of weeks for drawing everyone's attention to the EA bylaw and the number of affordable units and some of the other points that you've highlighted. And those seem to me like really important points. I think that, you know, again, what's before advisory and the town meeting is really about square footage. And I think that would be a reason for, given some of the things that you've highlighted, a reason for, you know, advisory to consider if it wants to have a motion that includes some of those things that you said in the sense of that you know, if there's going to be, if if there were to be a recommendation favorable action, that it would need to, you know, comply with some of the things that you had that you had said or or, you know, the language complying with current zoning laws and so on to just emphasize, you know, some of these things that you've really highlighted in a very helpful way in the last couple of weeks. Okay, so let's move on. I think we may get some comments on different dimensions of this. So to Shen, the floors, Shang, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So basically, I agree with Wei Yan's comment. So if we collect, if we have more affordable house, our property tax will be increased. And I just wondering, do we have another, like a solution, like some commercial plan, like billable restaurants, grocery store or other other way to like increase our budget or increase our like a funding? So I think currently all we discuss is about how to use our funding and how to use our property tax for our funding, like a builder, you know, to build a roundabout road and to like a build our library or school. So I just thinking, are there any way to make money on any commercial plan? So that at the same time, we can build more affordable house and also lower what reduce our property tax. So yeah, I just want to bring this up and and yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, some of those, some of those things, I think, you know, there the the you know, the perspective of how many kids would be added to the schools and so on, I think, was discussed before and I think may come up again with respect to Article 5. And of course, a new development will bring in some additional tax revenue. Just through the normal course of assessments and property taxes and so on. Marion, did you want to respond to any of that or just save it for the next article?
Um, I think the property tax and the, the general strategy of the town to balance our taxes and look for ways to generate more is a completely different discussion. And it's one that's really good to have. And, and I think it's great to have a, I think, a relatively new resident bring it up because it's very important. And we thought a lot about that in writing the master plan. That was a major thing we grappled with. So it's a good subject, but I think it's outside of the, outside of the scope of this meeting today.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, I'm losing track of names, but NSR's iPad Pro 12.9.
Yeah, so Dr. Robert Rosenthal, 100 Hollis Street.
Thanks, sorry, I didn't, didn't get the name right.
That's okay. If, if we have a financial model that shows the impact of this project on tax revenues over the, say, the next five years, I'd be thrilled to see that. I, I have not been able to find that. So I think it would be great if we could all look at that and we could bet that before the, the town meeting.
Okay, thanks, Robert. Matt Vitale?
Matt Vitale, Mill Street, also Dr. Not Applicable. The, I think the key issues, I would echo Marion's point, which is, I think these are lots of big, important questions that are largely out of scope for the question before you guys tonight. I think speaking back to earlier comments as it relates to the school. You know, every year there's an assessment by the district to look at class size. Just to correct the record, the target is not a class size of 18 or 19. But there is a guideline that they use to determine when to add sections, which they needed to do with an influx of young families during the pandemic. And will continue to need to titrate to that. I don't know that the presence of four more affordable homes in a development of 67 would be the thing that would say Pine Hill is now overflowing. I think the board for your consideration and kind of waiting through all of this, but would echo the comment of the chair, that I think the scope here is narrower than much of the conversation is.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. I would just reiterate the point that really what is before advisory and town meeting is whether to allow this change in square footage of the total project and a lot of other considerations around that. And obviously, the importance of compliance with town bylaws. Okay, it looks like we have got to the end of the first round of public comment. So let me close the first round of public comment and open advisory discussion. I've already probably abused the chair's prerogative to chime in, chime in during this discussion. So I'm going to lay back and let me open it up for other members of advisory with questions, comments, reactions, concerns about either what we've heard or just about the warrant article. Everybody's good? So we should, oh, Waseem, go ahead.
Thanks, Dan. I don't believe that I've heard the idea about proposing 10 units as opposed to seven before today. And I am wondering, when I hear this, what are the possible risks to recommending this article with the condition of 10 units versus seven? What are some of the possible risks that may arise from us doing so?
So let me just, I'll, I'll offer one quick perspective and then Chris may want to, may want to jump in. I, I mean, I think a seven to 10, and again, I credit Bob Murchison for bringing this to my attention. You know, that's just a matter of the 10 is what the town's bylaws currently require. In 2017, when this was approved by town meeting, the bylaws were different. And at that time, the bylaws are only required seven. But given a 2020 change in town bylaws for EA districts, the requirement now would be 10. So, you know, that kind of came up in the last couple of weeks. And I think everyone has realized that, yeah, the bylaws require, would require, are different now than, than they were in, in 2017, when this was first, first approved. And then you heard Paul Durant's comments about looking for additional beyond that numbers of affordable units. Somebody who knows the economics of development better than I do could probably go deeper. But, you know, at some point, you know, the developer is not making money on the affordable units. They're making money on the other units. And so at some point, a developer is going to say, I can't make enough money to make it worth doing this project. I, I have no idea where that number is. But there is a point when, for this type of a project, the developers say, don't, don't want to do it. And, and, you know, Waseem, I don't, I don't know where that is. But, you know, that, that would probably be the, the concern at some point. Chris, anything you want to come back on, on that?
Well, you know, when you look at the, the bylaw that we passed in 2020, we also put in a section for payment in lieu of affordable housing units. And in the bylaw, it says payments in lieu of affordable housing units shall not be accepted as part of multifamily developments. So if the town wants this project, and I do think we need this project because it's not just affordable. It's also over 55 because we're trying to get this to be a town where we're not, everyone's not 40 to 65 years old. And so affordable helps people along the spectrum. It helps people that are coming into town that might decide to make this their home long term. But the over 55 allows people to stay in town when they no longer want to have a house on two acres and, and maintain it. So what I was trying to say is, you know, with a very simple, and I'm not saying the planning board's going to do it, but select board, advisory, we might want to look at this and say, well, maybe we want to take out payments in lieu of affordable housing and, and say, that would be acceptable in this case. And so if they did want to put in seven units and make a payment in lieu to get the project moving forward and not scare the developer away, that might be something we want to consider. And so if, if we just say we're going to hold them to X amount of units, it, it, it doesn't make sense to me. They will be held to the bylaw.
So, thanks, Chris. I'm going to go to Penn next and Eddie May and Paul, I'm going to pick you up in the public comment period in just a minute. But I'm for now just going to focus on advisory members and, and kind of direct response from Chris to advisory members. So Penn, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Dan. I don't want to, I don't want to jump ahead and I don't want to confuse things, but I also think there is some, some common ground between Article 4 and Article 5. And they are Meadowbrook Commons and Coolidge Crossing are two different developments, but they're being developed, they're being proposed, being developed by, by Toll Brothers. And I think we can look, if we simply look at the affordable housing units being brought up by Meadowbrook Commons, you know, whether it's seven or 10 or more, it's barely, you know, it's not really going to budge our numbers, but where we're going to, what's going to push us. Am I out of order here?
No, go ahead, you're fine.
I, it seems to me that what's going to push us, you know, toward or to safe harbor is Coolidge Crossing. It also seems to me that these two votes, certainly this vote on Article 4, you know, it doesn't seem that it will guarantee that this happens, but it seems like a no vote would guarantee that it will not happen. So that's just two cents worth.
Okay, thanks, Penn. Any other advisory members with, and then again, we'll do a quick spin around and kind of take everybody's temperature on this. Any other?
Just a question, I don't.
Go ahead, Mike.
Does anyone raise this with Toll Brothers, the seven versus 10 difference?
Chris, Marion, do you know the state of play on that?
Marion, may.
I, yeah, my understanding, I, I have not directly discussed with Toll Brothers myself, so I can't tell you for sure. But I understand through our town administrator who has talked with him a bit, is that they, they are expecting to have to do 15% because of our current bylaws. They would rather do 10, believe me, of course, for economic reasons. Jeff, maybe you have some better information.
Yeah, is that all right if I add a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, people may know this, but Toll Brothers actually isn't the developer yet. They're, they're doing due diligence to take over this project from some of the previous planned developers. So they're at a stage right now where they're doing the due diligence, deciding whether they want to take over this project, basically. So it's not like they're really the developer yet. They're, they're considering becoming the developer. So I think in some ways our timing is good and I credit Bob also in it. They haven't completed their negotiations. So if we seem to be, as I favor pushing for 15% affordable in this EA unit, they can negotiate still with their partner, their partners that they're doing due diligence with to maybe adjust the price downwards somewhat reflecting, anticipating have to do it. So in a way, it's fair to them to make it be aware that the town is strongly in favor of having 10 affordable units. And they can factor that into their negotiations is what I would say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else on advisory? Paul? Paul Tholak?
Right, so one kind of question I have, right? It seems like a lot of the points made about the number of affordable units as well as being compliant as well are, are better answered by the planning board, right? So I wonder like if we vote in favor of this, right? Like based on the scope of the change in square footage, can we be assured that, that, that all these other issues will come up for the planning board? Because that would give me confidence, right? That's saying, don't just kicking the can down the road. It's like, think, like knowing that that's the right procedural way to have things happen, that, that they're very aware of the bylaws and, and can take all the appropriate decisions with that. Just curious if there's a thought about.
So, so, so just a quick thing to slip in and then I'll pass it on to Chris. I mean, I think we could, if, if, you know, advisory chose to formulate a motion that, you know, had language like, you know, that, that the approval is conditional on the project complying with current zoning bylaws. As just a way of emphasizing that expectation. Chris, do you want to say anything about what that process might look like going forward?
Well, all the things that Bob brought up, and they're all good points, would be addressed at the final development plan. And, and they have to comply with our bylaws and planning board cannot waive our bylaws. So whatever's written, if the project came before us now, they would be held to that, absolutely.
Pretty else on advisory? Okay, so.
Sorry, Dan, may I jump with one more question?
Go ahead, Waseem. And Eddie May, I, I'm going to get to you and we get to public, public comment in just, in just a minute. Waseem?
So, so again, I, I want to make sure I fully understand this point. The bylaws changed and Chris, your point is that since we don't have a submitted plan, then if the developer comes to us with a plan, then they will need to be bound by the 2020 zoning bylaw, is that, was, is that your point?
My, my point is they would be bound to whatever the bylaws are in place at the time. What I'm saying is something may not come before us for two or three years and bylaws may change. And so, and so to, to say you're going to do so many units doesn't make sense to me.
So, so then may I ask why that was, why the select board felt that that was the right vote to make?
Well, so, so I think the select board is actually going to vote again on this just a little bit later. When we get to the next public comment session. But I, I was just going to add on to what Chris said. And as Chris said, bylaws can change, but under the current bylaw, this type of project would have to have 15% affordable units, which would be 10. And that's the 2020 bylaw that was passed.
Okay, may I have, do a follow up again? I'm still, so then failing to understand why we would need to specifically say, yes, we approve this conditional on 10 units? If the bylaw says 10 units, then why is that a condition that we would, we would prefer to maybe put in there?
So my understanding is that the, the, you know, a rationale for doing that would be as just a way of emphasizing that everybody is aware that, you know, the bylaw would require a different number of units than what was in the 2017, 2017 preliminary development plan. And as you say, maybe it's a bit redundant. But I think that redundancy gives some, seems, seems like that redundancy gives some people a bit of comfort.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Chris, I was, I see Eddie May on the call and she on, on Zoom and, you know, she had wanted to speak. Do you want to open up a planning board meeting?
Is, is there a third member that you see?
Frank, Frank Hook is, is here. Okay, oh, wait, sorry, Frank Hook was here, but I don't see him here anymore.
Yes, I'm still here, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, then I would like to call to order the planning board meeting for this evening. That's all.
Okay.
You can call on Eddie May, just maybe time at the end to adjourn.
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We'll, we'll all do that, we'll all do that together. Okay, anybody else on advisory with comments, questions?
Dan, can I just one question here, just to put a finer, can you hear me, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Put a finer point on this, I guess, to Chris. In order for shovels to go on the ground here, a final development plan has to be submitted and approved by the planning board? Is that?
Correct.
And at the time that's final, proposals put forward, the bylaws at that time have to be essentially adhered to. It's when that final, okay, thank you.
Okay. Why don't we do a quick spin around advisory, kind of see what people are thinking? And then we'll get to public comment and we can bring in, we can bring in additional people. I guess, Eddie May, you'd want to speak and since you're on the planning board, I think it makes sense for you to go ahead now if you, if, if you want. And then we'll get to everybody else as soon as we get to public comment.
Sure, a couple of things. I guess, you know, the, the, the question before you was drafted, looking at the, kind of, because it came up, the plan as is. And if they change the script, but it's because some areas of the units are, are finished, whereas previously they would not be finished. So the, the, you know, that was kind of the question. And that's a standard process. The other thing is that the inclusionary zoning bylaw that we passed in 2020 was, that was, we, we asked for 15% affordable units in that inclusionary zoning bylaw. We did a lot of studies and a lot of people said, a lot of towns and a lot of housing advisors said that that was a really high bar. And it's, you know, it was a difficult thing and we have, and we said, well, well, let's try it. And who knows what will happen, but we have, you know, it's, it's, we said it can almost be changed. It has to go to town meeting, but that's for another meeting to discuss. However, 15% can make or break because these are not developments, these are not 40B developments. They do not get the same state subsidies and other. They do not get the same state subsidies and other incentives and tax breaks. This project is under our EA zoning bylaws. And it's preferable because it does go before the local town boards for review process. So that goes back to what Chris Owen is saying, that this project will be going before all the various boards. It will have to comply with the various bylaws. And again, and it also goes back to, at the end of the day, the question that we're bringing forth to town, all of these things will take time and there will be other measures of checkpoints. And nothing's happening overnight. This is, you know, it's a lengthy process. Right now, we know Toll Brothers is doing their due diligence, they might be a developer. We also know that at one time it was Trask and then it was Pulte and Baystone and it could be someone different. We just don't know. So to get so concerned about the little details when we will have, those things will get worked out before various town boards when that commitment is made.
Okay, thanks, Addie Mae. So Paul and Steve, if you guys are okay, I wanted to just do a spin around through advisory, kind of take everybody's temperature and then get to public comment and put you guys at the top of that. If there's something that you feel like you really need to say before we do that, that's good, but otherwise I prefer to do it that way. Okay, all right. So let's kind of see where folks on advisory are. I think from my comments, you know, I'm thinking of this as really focusing on the square footage issue with the understanding that these other points are important. But so, you know, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable, I'm pretty comfortable with the square footage change. But let me see where everybody else is on this. Nora, let me start with you if I could.
My spacebar isn't working, sorry. Thank you. No, I mean, thank you, Addie, for clarifying and Chris. You know, as we're focusing, I think I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
You know, pending the, the processes going forward.
And, and we'll in our voting session talk about what sort of language we would want to include in whatever we, whatever we do. Waseem, what are you thinking?
So I am in support of this. This is elderly affordable and we want to provide options for people who want to stay in town, so I'm in support of this. And if the increase in square footage makes this development attractive and makes it happen, then I think this is a good thing for the town. I am, I don't see the need for the special wording of seven versus 10. I don't see a need for that, but in general, that's where I stand.
Okay, thanks, Waseem.
And thank you everyone for the clarifications.
Yeah, this was a good, this was a good conversation. Natalie, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thanks. Mike Flanagan?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Paul?
Yes, I'm okay with it as well. I feel better about the details getting worked out in the comments that Addie Mae and Chris made as well. It seems like the planning board will be able to make sure we comply as needed.
Thanks, Shelley?
I mean, I'm in support as well. I think if this, if the increase in square footage was 10% or less that they wanted to do, this wouldn't even be something that would be in front of us. So to me, it's like, we're looking at basically approving a 10.5% increase. And to me, that seems in order to not hold up the potential for the development and the increase in affordable housing, I am in favor.
Okay, thanks, Penn?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of it and I'm in favor of it as, as written.
Okay, thanks. Mike W?
I am also in favor.
Okay, all right. So that I think gives everybody on the call kind of a sense of where advisory is kind of going on this, we'll get to a formal vote, but before we do that, we're going to come back. So I'll close the advisory discussion session. We'll open up the second public comment period. And Paul, the floor is yours, thank you for being so patient.
So I wanted to answer the question why the Board of Selectmen voted the way it did. Because I've been the one that's been advocating for that condition. First, let me say that the change in square footage is not a trivial change. It changes the, the quality of the housing. So we're going from housing that while it's not affordable, is lower priced because it's smaller, to housing that's more luxurious and therefore is going to be probably a million dollars or more. So it, there are categories of people who are looking for housing that aren't, what's the right phrase, not poor enough to qualify for affordable housing, but not rich enough to afford the expensive houses. That's called the workforce housing, there's all kinds of fancy names for it. By increasing the square footage, we're letting them charge more for these properties. And by charging more, it's going to self-select to a, to a less, less diversity in, in economic status. Second is this argument that the planning board will take care of everything. The unfortunate reality that I can tell you from being a lawyer that is frequently representing municipalities is that this developer, as any developer could do, is he could go to a 40B and he could ask for three, up to 300 units on the site. And as part of that process, there is no planning board. It goes to the Board of Appeals and none of the bylaws are binding, they're all waivable. So they're walking around with a loaded gun in their, in their holster. That's why I've been saying that I'm looking for an agreement with them. An agreement upfront before town meeting that they will do 10 and no challenge, no lawsuit, no contest. So that issue is settled and it's not going to lead to an unintended consequence for the community. I think it's better planning, it's better management, it lowers our risk considerably. And yes, I would very much love for the planning board to be able to do all these things. But I've seen so many times in so many other communities that it, it doesn't go that way.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Just add one other point that I dealt with, with Toll Brothers elsewhere. They know what they're doing, they know what their options are, they have lots of lawyers. They have to be dealt with firmly.
Yeah.
Or you're going to lose.
Yeah, thanks. Chris, do you want to jump in on that and then we'll?
Yeah. I, I think if you want to ruin the project and push it into a 40B is to do exactly what Paul's suggesting. We, we don't want to give anything away, we want to work with these developers, we need these projects done. One can't happen without the other and that all ties into the next warrant article. They will be held to our bylaws. You know, I mean, earlier, and I like Paul, earlier, he said, well, why don't we ask for 20 units or some ridiculous number? If you're going to kill a project, that's how we're going to kill it. And we don't want to kill it, but that's not even what this is about. We're talking square footage and most of it is finishing the basements. So I don't understand. You know, I think this is a good project and we've been talking about this for, I don't know, five, six years. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. Steve, Steve Sykes, thanks for being patient.
Yeah, no problem. I'll be brief, I just wanted to clarify because I think there's confusion among some of the advisory members about why we're talking about 10 units and why the select board is recommending this or that. And honestly, for me, it was just a sort of confusion when we, the select board were discussing it as to whether this project was going to be grandfathered in with the seven units because it was already previously approved or whether it was going to be held to the current zoning bylaw. And so I think that tonight's discussion has been enlightening and, you know, our, our motion when we approved this, also it wasn't to specify the number of units, just to specify that the project has to abide by the current zoning bylaw of the town. So again, if I were voting as an advisory member tonight, I would, I would feel fine with not adding a specific clause like that. And I'm, I am not advocating for specifying the number of affordable units, just that, that it abide by the current zoning bylaw. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Let's see. Jeff, at some point, I think you're going to want to do some select board stuff. We can pick up some more comments before we get to that. Okay, but let's, let's do that. Paul, you still have your hand up, did you have another comment or?
What it did.
Okay. Bob Murchison, to you.
Thank you, Dan. I'm going to respectfully disagree both with you, Dan, and with the rest of the advisory and let me explain. And I'm a, I'm a read the words guy. You know, I, I read the amendment that's before you tonight. The amendment is not to amend the square footage. What's, what's before you is to approve an amended preliminary development plan, okay? Is that, am I making sense? We're not approving an amendment to an approved plan. We are approving an amended preliminary development plan. So if you vote to move this forward as is, you are suggesting to the town that we should vote for a preliminary development plan, amended preliminary development plan that is clearly out of compliance with a major, major bylaw of our town. And I would argue some additional points. I'm, I'm less focused, the additional ones, perhaps Chris can take care of those along the way. The first one, you're, you're asking us as voters to approve something that is non-compliant. And I think that's, that's not only wrong, it's potentially illegal. I mean, we litigate in our town to keep affordable housing out. And then our project comes along and we say, oh no, you don't need to comply with the law. You can do just seven units instead of the 10 that, to me, that sounds like a fair housing issue. And I think the lawyers in the room knows, know what that means. You don't want to do that. You don't want to litigate against affordable housing and then turn around and give Toll Brothers, of all people, the right to be non-compliant. So I urge you to vote yes on this, but vote yes if they come back and they put a plan that is compliant with our laws, and I think that's critical, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Bob. And, you know, that, I think, it does sound like there's a, a bit of variation in views, but I think, at least in my mind, what you just said was the motivation for adding language that says, you know, conditional on compliance with, with current zoning or current, current bylaws. And I think what you said is the motivation for that, though it did sound like there was a bit of variation amongst different folks about how to approach that. Who else with comments, questions? Looks like we got to the end of that. Jeff, can I, shall I turn it over to you, do you want to?
Yeah, I think, I think we're, with the select board, we did vote, but I think we're just confirm our vote tonight is what we're going to do. So Marion, do you want to make the motion? Or do you prefer that I do?
I, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion, but I would like to hear once again the exact language that's in the warrant article. Just to be sure.
Want me to read it to you?
If you will.
To see if the town will vote to approve the amended preliminary development plan, as Bob just said, for the Meadowbrook Commons Project located at 104 Cooley Street, the original of which was approved in conjunction with the amended zoning map to EA for subject property at the special town meeting of December 5th, 2017, pursuant to section 5.6.3 of the zoning bylaw. Said amendment being detailed in the preliminary development plan dated August 15th, 2023, unfilled in the office of the town clerk or take any other action thereon.
So there's no language there concerning compliant, conditioned on compliance with current zoning bylaw?
Correct, doesn't say that, just ask the town to approve the amended preliminary development plan. And I guess the only, I don't know what the amendments are, but I think the only one I'm aware of is the 15, the, the square footage that they're asking for an increase in.
They moved the buildings.
Yeah, the, the plan is different, yeah, I've seen, I've seen the sketch. That, I mean, there's, as Bob has pointed out, there's lots that's different, but so my recommendation is the select board should approve it contingent on compliance with current planning board bylaws and that would be current. It could, it could be, you know, as Chris pointed out, could be three years from now, where they define, I don't know what it would be, but just current zoning board bylaws. Our planning board zoning bylaws. All right, so we'll take a vote, a roll call vote then, Stephen?
Before I vote, actually, I'd like to ask Bob Murchison if you feel that the added condition there covers your concerns?
I, I thank you for asking, Stephen. I, I, I mean, I think technically it, it, it does. However, do we as a town, what, what's the harm in Toll Brothers coming forward? They already know about this, they've seen my email, I know that. And as I think Marion mentioned, they're expecting that it will be 10 units. Why do we want the voters? So for me, yes, the language covers it, but it doesn't, it's not right to do it that way, right? That's my opinion, Stephen, is that we need to have them come forward and say it's going to be 10 and will be SHI compliant. And with those two things, they can, they can comment, it can be posted in time and it can all happen. That would be my preference. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I guess to me, the challenge is just that, you know, this, the timeline of the special town meeting is already on its way, right? And any speed bumps to that just risk this entire town meeting, basically. And, you know, I would agree that if Chris, you know, could get Toll Brothers to, I mean, I guess the problem is that they aren't officially the developers yet, right? And that's, that's part of the problem. So, so ultimately, that's why I'm like, well, if we can just add the clause in then, that essentially will ultimately hold them to all of the conditions, then that is the most expedient way forward, given that we are already on the timeline, if that makes sense. So with that, I will vote aye.
Hey, Marion?
Yes, if I can say two words, I will vote aye as well with that conditional clause. Because in our, in the EA bylaw, the current EA bylaw, the one thing that definitely needs a amended or a new preliminary plan is square footage. So that is necessary, but the rest can be, be conditional, phrase that we put in there.
Okay, Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well and as, as I'm want to say, we're in violent agreement as usual, as a town. Thank you, Dan.
So you're, so you guys are at four zero, right?
Four, four zero with one member absent.
One member absent, right, okay, okay. So for new members of advisory, right, as sometimes happens, the select board wants to, in our public hearing, having heard, they want to hear the conversation and the discussion before they finalize their vote. So that's, that's, that's what we just, that's what we just saw. Anybody else with comments before we close the second public comment period? All right, seeing none, I will close the second public. All right, seeing none, uh, I will close the second public comment period. And let's go to uh advisory voting. Um, so, I mean, I think got the sense from earlier that people are generally in favor. I guess the question for us is uh. You know, what language would we want to have on our recommendation to town? You know, would we wanna? Do more or less the same thing that the select board did, uh, recommend approval. Conditional on uh compliance with um, compliance with uh. Town uh zoning bylaws or maybe just town bylaws? Or is there another um approach that would make people uh, that, that people would prefer? So. Open to uh either discussion at that point, or if anybody wants to make a motion to move us forward, that would be fine as well.
I make a motion to move us forward.
Uh, and so Nora, wha- what are you thinking about the, for your motion? What are you thinking about the language?
I would say the language, just as um the select board was mentioning, to meet current bylaws.
So compliant, we're in compliance with.
At, at the time, exactly.
Yeah, in compliance with bylaws, okay.
Second.
Okay, just a second as I get some notes here. Uh, who, who is the second? Just so I'm keeping track. Uh, thanks, Penn. Okay, so motion and second, any discussion of the motion before we vote?
Dan, are, is the language gonna be such that if this were, we were talking about this in six years because. This was done in twenty seventeen at twenty twenty-three. The original was. Preliminary plan being approved back in twenty seventeen. Can we make that it just, can it be more broad so that it's not the bylaw? It, it won't just be the current bylaws. It'll just be the bylaws in effect at the time. Something that's so that we don't have to revisit that, so that they're subject to it regardless of whether it's, we changed the bylaws in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. Uh, so that's, that's, that, that seems like a really good observation to me that um. You know, sort of would avoid some future ambiguity. What does the word current mean and all? So maybe it could be in compliance with bylaws in effect? Something like that.
Preliminary development plan, right? So, we're only approving amended preliminary development plan as of today or as of the town meeting, right, Dan? So, it's the, it's the bylaws as, as Bob, I guess, said. As of today, and whatever the fi- the bylaws are, the final development plan are the bylaws and. Right? They would have to. In theory, adhere to those as well.
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking the thrust of Shelley's point is to just. Not lock in or cast in stone that it's bylaws as of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, but it's the bylaws. You know, wherever they are at the time that they get to making that decision, hence, you know, maybe some language like the in compliance with bylaws in effect. Um, something like that. So Nor- Nor- Nora, um, and Penn, uh, I mean, your motion, your second. Does that, does Shelley suggest a change?
Yes, when I, I thought, I had mentioned when I said current, that at the time of. So, just as Shelley pointed out.
Yeah.
And go ahead, up.
No, no, go ahead.
Paul, I see Paul's hand raised, so he might add some clarity.
Yeah, oh, Paul, go ahead.
The, the motion that the board of selectmen negotiated amongst themselves was to say. Uh, the condition was to be in compliance with the, the zoning bylaws of the town. We didn't pick a date. Specifically, uh, cuz they're in zoning, there's all kinds of issues about grandfathering and not grandfathered and all that kind of stuff, and we didn't wanna get into a big.
Yeah.
Discussion about. So the language I'd propose is be the same as we worked out on the select board level, which is in compliance with the zoning bylaws of the town.
Yeah, okay. Um, Shelley, does that make sense to you?
It does. That's more general than what we were saying.
Okay, okay.
So I think it's more broad.
Uh, Nora, Penn, um, your motion, your second?
Yes.
Good, good with that? Okay, all right. Great, thank you, Paul. That, I think, gets everybody in sync. Um, okay, so any other discussion of the motion, which would be to recommend approval? Um, and Wassim, I'll get to you just a second, would be to recommend approval. Uh, with the condition that, you know, the project going forward be in compliance with zoning bylaws of the town. Um, Wassim, before we get to voting, comment, question on that?
Yes, I had a que- uh, question. The. Again, I'm reading the article. And it says said amendment being detailed in the preliminary development plan dated August fifteen. What I heard is that in that preliminary development plan. There was only the difference in square footage, the location. Were, was there any details about the number of affordable units in that development plan?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that development plan, yeah, that development plan showed seven units. And that's, they, they think the key reason for wanting to add this language that says. Gotta be in compliance with zoning uh, with zoning bylaws of the town, because owning bylaws of the town uh would require ten.
Okay, okay, well, that's, that's a big uh factor. Okay, thank you for answering this.
Okay, a- any other advisory discussion of the motion before we vote? Okay, so uh. So let's vote. Um, let's do a roll call. Um, Wassim, I'll start with you.
Sorry for the delay. Um. Okay, so, 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 y- y- you know, I heard that. The developer is expecting to be, to be in compliance with our. Bylaws at the time, but then I just now heard that the preliminary development plan. Had seven affordable units, and so I'm very. Conflicted now, because I don't want to. Make a vote that can jeopardize this. We don't really have leverage, I think, so, so. And I don't want this to go to the route of forty B. Um, so I'm conflicted about this, but I think I will vote. In support of the amendment. It's uh, I, yeah, sorry, sorry for taking a long time.
Okay.
Support, I guess, as is.
Okay, okay. Um, Mike Flanagan, Mike F.
Yeah, I'll support the amendment with the proposed language.
Uh, Paul?
Yes, I do the same. I support the amendment with the pro- um. Uh, with the board's language, yes.
Uh, Nora?
I support.
Uh, Shelley?
I also support.
Uh, Natalie, I think had to step away. Um, so Mike W?
Uh, I also support.
Uh, Penn?
I support.
And I do as well, so that gets us to eight zero since Natalie had to step away. Okay, so that's article four. Um, we're gonna get to article five. Let me propose that we take a five-minute break. And come back at nine oh five. And then we'll get going on article, on article five and get to uh, get through the rest of this this evening. So I'll see everybody in five minutes. All right, let's come back. Um, I got some tea and a cookie. Hope everybody else got whatever else, uh, whatever else, uh, works for you. Um, okay, so. Um, on to uh, article five. Marion Neutra, select board member, is gonna present that. Uh, if you wanna go ahead and share a screen, floor is yours for five minutes.
I will. They move you all over. Okay, is that good?
Looks good.
All right, I've gotta move everybody out of here, though. Wait a second. Here we go. Okay. The overarching goal of this warrant article, as you now know, is to enable. Two housing developments on Coolidge Street that have already been approved by the town. They were approved first because, as you've heard, uh, together, they would provide a hundred and thirty. Affordable housing units and get us over the ten percent uh state. Affordable housing requirement under the forty B law. And second, because their location uh opens the possibility of getting water and sewer infrastructure from neighboring towns. So they wouldn't impact Sherburne wells or groundwater. And in fact, Framingham is willing to extend their MWRA water and sewer pipes along Framingham. Uh, and from Framingham and in intermunicipal agreement is being negotiated. But why now? Why in, in, in October? It's because as you, as you've heard, we have a developer Toll Brothers very interested in building both projects. And it's a large company, has the resources to install the water and sewer infrastructure from Framingham. Which is going to cost millions at no cost to Sherburne. So this extension, though, requires that we set up a water and sewer uh district. And that requires legislation by the state, uh, adopted by the state legislature. But to submit legislation to the state, we first need town meeting approval. So that's what this is about. A working group led by the town administrator and council uh has drafted a uh. Potential. District, uh, which you see on this map. Uh, the first step, of course, was to draw the boundaries of the district. And of course, the two developments. On uh Coolidge have to be included. The developer is paying for this entire line. Um, and it also would include the properties on Kendall that already get their water from Framingham. That's in yellow on the map. Now, we know that the residents of this entire North Sherburne area are concerned about potential contamination. From the general chemical super front site, which is right over here off the map in Framingham. So naturally, uh, we thought residents along these main lines should have the option to be connected in the future. So we included all the properties who have but the main lines and as well as Meadowbrook Road in the district. But on the other hand, is concerned that access to water will result in uncontrolled dense development in this area. So in that regard, though, it's important to remember, these are all private properties. Nothing can be done without the owner's participation. And any new development proposal always needs approval by town boards, but most importantly, uh, for us. Uh, the amount of water and sewer available for Framingham uh will be limited. It's limited by the intermunicipal agreement that's being negotiated. And uh, it's a question of how much water Framingham is willing to provide to Sherburne. And the cost of the developer of Framingham's system improvements and fees, which go up depending on the amount of water. So. A uh provision of the legislation is that if Sherburne seeks to increase the IMA limit. For a future development. And there's not sufficient water. The IMA has to be renegotiated with Framingham. And a revised IMA has to be approved at the Sherburne Town Meeting. So how will this total capacity be allocated? Among the properties in the district? First of all, we agreed that there has to be base capacity reserved for the properties. In the district to be connected to water or sewer. If they wanna be, for their current land use. Uh, they're negotiating also some excess capacity that's intended for flexibility, possible future changes of use in the district. And here, we don't know exactly what's coming, so it has to be flexible. If excess capacity is available, then the district commission has to approve that allocation. But if it's not available, the IMA has to be renegotiated and it goes back to town meeting. So the change of use rule applies to a- any large change of use within the district. So, in a nutshell. Uh, the, the legislation establishes the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District as a legal entity. It's separate from Sherburne. It's separate from the developer, separate from Framingham. As you've seen, the legislation establishes the district boundaries and stipulates how water and sewer capacity will be allocated as fairly as possible. And it will be overseen by a governing board called a District Commission. Two members will be appointed by the largest users, probably the developments, but three members will be appointed by Sherburne elected officials, two by the Select Board, one by the Water Commissioners. So the fact that a four to five vote is required for decisions gives Sherburne some continued oversight of what goes on there. So the the bottom line here is that the Water and Sewer District is a prerequisite for building these projects. If we don't get a water sewer in district, they're not going to be built. The residents in the district will be guaranteed connection in the future if they want. There's no cost to the town. The developer will transfer ownership of the water and sewer infrastructure to the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. The town will not own it. And there will be no impact on property taxes. So I had five minutes. I have to stop there. We can go on if there are questions and I can keep the slides up if you like or stop share. Dan, it's up to you. Tell me what to do.
Dan, you're muted.
Yeah, thanks. Marion, it's fine if you leave the slides up. It might come to, you know, there might be questions for which they'd be helpful. So. That's great. Thanks, Marion. Why don't we open up the public comment period? First public comment period. And then we'll get to advisory questions, comments, and so on. So I'm opening the first public comment period if anybody would like to ask question, raise a concern, express a perspective. Huh, okay. Bob Murchison, go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Hi. So I actually have two questions. And I just want to start by saying that I am overall in favor of this. I think that bringing water and sewer to a part of town is critically important to the long-term future economic health and and public health of the town. And I'm just wildly in favor of this. However, as with the previous article, I have some concerns. And this time my concerns are more about that we kind of, we all understand what's going on here. And because I've heard some things that described and explained that in different ways, in different public sessions. And I'd like to just clarify them tonight. With your permission, Dan, may I direct questions to Attorney Mullin, who wrote the legislation?
Yeah, fine by me, Tom, if you're good with that.
Sure. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So my first question is Marion and others who have presented this. And by the way, I am a property owner in North Sherburne.
And Bob, let me just jump in for one second. I should just mention that Tom Mullin is town council. So everybody knows why you're directing this at Tom and.
Yeah. It's my understanding that he's the author.
Tom, why don't you, I didn't say that exactly right. Tom, why don't you just tell us your your position relative to the town on this? So that everybody knows that and understands why Bob specifically mentioned you.
Yeah, I have been retained as special counsel for this limited purpose. Your regular town council felt that it was wise to recuse himself, given that he had previously represented Framingham.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Okay, Bob, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew who the players were.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. So the first question is, it's been said many times that there'll be no impact on property taxes, and I believe that's true. However, I want to clarify, as a property owner in North Sherburne, Tom, I read the legislation that you've drafted, and I believe the latest legislation, latest draft is September thirteenth. Am I correct about that? That that's what's been posted and is the current, am I right? September thirteenth version?
There was one minor change that was made just the last day or two, Mr. Murchison, in response to a concern that you raised.
Oh, great.
And that is about section eleven. If you like, we could deal with that now.
Could you just remind me what section eleven?
Okay, section eleven has to do with the power of the district to assess betterments.
That's exactly where my question was going. So, you know, it's been said many times that there's no impact on property taxes. And I read your draft to say that there could be assessments of property owners by the North Sherburne Water District. And I, you know, I don't know if disingenuous is the wrong word. I don't think people intended to mislead. But as a property owner, I read the legislation to say that I could be effectively taxed by the North Sherburne Water District. And again, I'm in favor of this. I just want, you know, clarity to the voters before we vote on it. So how is that changed now?
Sure. So section eleven is very brief. It's just one sentence. So let me read it as it now stands. "Notwithstanding the provisions of section thirteen of chapter eighty of the general laws or the provisions of any other general or special law, to the contrary, any assessment made by the district to one or more property owners on account of a betterment project specially affecting their property may be apportioned into such number of equal portions to be paid one portion per year as may be determined by the district." The concept of a betterment is that when the district or town or whatever the authority may be does something that specifically benefits me and my property, then I am assessed a fee for that. And if it is a true betterment, then that fee can just go on my taxes. And so it becomes a something that the town or the district can collect in the same way that the town collects taxes that aren't paid. And it becomes a lien on the property, making it difficult for me to sell it until I clear it up.
And so let me just clarify, it was fairly to my brain legalistic. So let me just kind of say it in a simple phrase. So are you saying, first of all, that this this kind of charge that the the district could put on a property owner will would only occur to a property owner that was connecting to the water and sewer? Am I right about that? Not the entire district?
That's right. Only to somebody who is specially affected by some action of the district. So if you have property and you say to the district, hey, I'd like you to extend this down this private way so that it connects to my house, which has not previously been connected, the district will do it, but you'll end up paying, and that's a betterment.
Okay, so that's a fairly specific case. Let me just again clarify one more on this point, and then I'll move on. And that is, if I'm a, if I have a house, which I do at on Coolidge Street, if and the pipe runs right down in front of my, you know, along the street in front of my house, all I have to pay is the cost of getting a pipe down and into the North Sherburne Water District's pipe. And there wouldn't be any significant betterment. Am I correct about that?
In fact, I don't think there there would be a betterment at all. I think you would be charged an upfront cost of making that small connection.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. That's a very, well, my other question is.
Let me just, let me just, since, since we, you know, have time limits, let me just let me get to anybody else who wants to get in with question or comment, and then I'll circle, I'll circle back to you.
Sure.
Right. So Robert Johnson, you had had your hand up if you wanted to ask a question, make a comment.
I lowered my hand.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? Before we circle back to Bob Murchison, just I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to get in with any questions or comments.
Of course, thank you. Okay, so again, to Attorney Mullin, a theoretical question for you. If someone owns land in the district and they want to further develop their land, and let's say it's multifamily. If there is excess capacity, let's say there's eleven thousand gallons of excess capacity. You know, by the definition that's in your legislation, you know, that's a that's a defined term, right? Excess capacity. If there is eleven thousand gallons of excess capacity and someone comes and asks for the use to use that eleven thousand gallons in order to develop one hundred bedrooms on their land. Am I correct that the North Sherburne Water District will be required to vote in favor of doing of allocating that excess capacity to that project? That's my reading of it, and I just want to confirm that that's correct.
Yeah, that is right. Right. The the district will deal with requests like that on a first come, first served basis.
Yeah, yeah, because I heard, actually, Dan, back to you for a second. I heard in your meeting a week ago, or whenever it was, ten days ago, you asked us a question, which I thought you phrased quite well, where you said, does someone who owns property have a by right access to that excess capacity? And I understood that the answer had been no. And I think Attorney Mullin has just clarified that the answer actually is yes. And again, I'm in favor of this. I want it to happen. But I also want all of us to understand what the, you know, I've read the legislation, and I would encourage others. This is really about the legislation. Please read it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. And Tom, just to follow up on that, on Bob's point. Of course, if, and maybe you can clarify how what you were just discussing with Bob fits with this, but right, there's also language in the legislation indicating that if there's a change of use or rezoning, that would need to be approved by the district since, you know, the, since the base capacity is based on current use. So how does how does that language in the in legislation fit with what Bob was just mentioning?
So. If you are continuing to use your property as it's currently used, then you're within the reserved capacity. If you're going to do something, though, like dividing or subdividing your land or changing the use to make it a much more intensive use, then your, the question is whether there is enough excess capacity to accommodate your your new plan. And the legislation provides that if the district has enough reserved capacity to accommodate you, then the district shall do so.
Yeah. So I, I, when I read the legislation, the sentences just before that, I thought, and again, not an attorney, I may have misunderstood how the bits fit together. But I had thought the bits before that say that if somebody wants to change use or rezone, and so therefore have a greater draw on the base capacity, they would need approval of that from the from the district. Is that, is that, am I incorrect about that, Tom?
No, you're right about that. The previous sentence is say, if you want to change the use, then you need a permit from the District Commission. And if you want to divide or subdivide, you need a permit from the District Commission. And and here's the next crucial sentence. "The commission shall grant a permit for the continued use of an existing water or sewer connection despite such reconstruction, enlargement, expansion, change or alteration, and shall grant a permit for additional connections with respect to lots created by such division or subdivision if the commission determines that the water and sewer capacity required thereby is then available to the district within the excess capacity."
And so meaning that, again, just not a lawyer, want to make sure I'm getting this. Meaning that the district really, you know, anybody who comes with a change of use, if there's excess capacity, the district shall approve it?
Shall approve it on a first come, first served basis. And if, when they exhaust the excess capacity, then the only way to add more capacity would be to amend the intermunicipal agreement.
Okay.
And that requires town meeting approval.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. Matt Vitale, let's go to you.
Matt Vitale, Mill Street.
I think this is probably also a question for Tom, just to confirm understanding. Is that all right, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think, you know, sort of in the hypothetical offered by Mr. Murchison, the presumption was that there was a planned compliant that could then sort of propose the consumption of that water. Is it correct that upon the district being created, properties within that would then rely on local zoning to determine the type and scale of the properties? There may be a sort of larger conversation about exactly how housing inventory timing works. But my understanding is that, again, I think it was Depends earlier comment, voting yes on this question creates the capacity for the town to use our bylaws and our boards. If we don't, then we don't enter safe harbor, and we remain in a place where forty Bs bypass all of those things. And so if, in fact, the district exists, then my understanding is that the bylaws for the town of Sherburne would then apply to properties within that district in terms of managing how development fits within the master plan and everything else.
Well, you're certainly right that the zoning bylaws would continue to apply here as they would anywhere in town. We're not, we're not varying them. The reserved capacity would be determined by reference to the needs of the two new big projects plus the existing uses as they are on the ground right now. So I'm sorry, did I answer your question or did I miss it?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Robert Johnson, go ahead, please.
Robert Johnson, two seven two Western Avenue. And what sort of expenses might this water district have? And how would it get the revenue to pay for those expenses?
Marion, maybe that's to you.
Sure. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, I'm not muted. Right. The water district would would function like, like a business, basically. The commissioners will most likely, this is how it usually works, as I understand, a contract out to a management company that specializes in this sort of thing to manage the district. And that's how it's done in Dover and other and other towns. And whatever expenses the district has, obviously would fall on the people using the water in the district. It is the, the, people will no longer be getting free water from their well. That's the other side of having municipal water. People in Natick and Framingham pay a water fee every month. And people in the district would have to pay for their use of water. There will be a if I understand the the engineering correctly, there will be a master meter on the Sherburne Town Line that at the Framingham Sherburne interface. And that will tell Framingham the total amount of water, the total amount they're going to charge Sherburne for that month. The district in turn will charge the users within the district proportionally to their use of the water and amount that they will calculate every month. So people within the district will have fees for the water. And of course, always built into that is extra for a maintenance fund. So if a major repair has to be made, that will be distributed proportionally depending on water use among the people in the district. Does that make sense, Tom?
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Marion. Mary Moore, you're next.
Hi. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Just a quick comment. I just want to say I thank everybody for all their work on this. I know it's been a lot. I just want to say I thank everybody for all their work on this. I know it's been a lot of, um, effort. And I do support the creation of a water district. Um, I do want to also just make sure that, um, for people who might not be aware that, Mr. Merchison is pursuing project eligibility for a twelve house project on Coolidge Street. And I just don't think that was kind of brought forward in some of the comments. So I think that's relevant and worth putting on the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, Steve Ty, you're next. Go ahead, please.
Um, yeah, actually, just to follow up on that, I was also going to, um, point out that, that Bob Merchison is a property owner, but that he has in fact filed a, um, forty B for that, uh, parcel. And I think that, you know, the context of his question was essentially, so long as, even though his forty B would be a change of use, but so long as he scales that project such that it would fit within the excess capacity, are you saying then, um, that, uh, essentially he has by right, um, the ability to, um, hook into, uh, that the water district?
That is correct. You know, this was the conundrum faced by the working group, frankly. I see the, the problem here. If one developer, uh, makes, it proposes a project large enough to, uh, consume a lot of that excess capacity, uh, the other people in the district, uh, lose that opportunity. But of course, uh, recall that any development still has to go through all the hoops, uh, for the town. If it's going to happen. But the other side is, how do we allocate the excess capacity? You know, one concept, uh, was, uh, and this was discussed, to put it in the hands, uh, to give the, uh, to give the judgment call, uh, to the water commissioners or the select board. But then it becomes kind of a political thing. You know, it's not the water commissioners that necessarily should be deciding the future of the town. So I think our only recourse here is to keep it absolutely apolitical, non-political. And, uh, make it a simple, you know, if you can get a project through all the hoops and boards of the town, and by the way, if this is built, we will be in Safe Harbor, so there's no question of an additional forty B. But a, a large future development that hasn't been proposed yet, would not be able to be developed unless the town approves it through all the other usual mechanisms. But, uh, that, that's a conundrum, and, and, uh, we see that clearly. But basically, there's no fair, non-political, objective solution to it that, that we could see.
Yeah, so let me just slip in a thanks to all the people who spoke on this. Helped me, helped me understand how this all works a little more clearly. Okay, Adam, uh, you, you're up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, uh, Adam Page, three Peckham Hall Road. Hi, uh, just a follow up, uh, to Marian. So if it's a first come, first served, is there a risk that hypothetically, uh, Mr. Merchison's project could consume enough excess capacity to prevent the proposed forty B from being possible?
No, because, uh, the, uh, the intermunicipal agreement with Framingham is being negotiated now, but it will only be signed and become, uh, legal if these developments go forward. And if they go forward, we'll be in Safe Harbor. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Mary Moore, floor is yours.
Thank you, Dan. Um, to follow on to Adam's question, if individual homeowners wanted to tap in, but there was no more capacity because there was a forty B that might tap into it before they decide to, would that prevent individual homeowners from tapping in?
No, it would not, because, uh, no development will be able to tap into the reserve or base capacity, which is saved for individual homeowners.
Thank you, Marian.
Paul Dorensis, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to cast a cautionary note about this business about being in Safe Harbor with forty B. I, I, I serve as town council to a number of communities who got into Safe Harbor above ten percent. And now I spend a fair amount of time trying to keep them there. And as, as housing gets built, as populations change, as restrictions expire, it's very easy to fall out of that ten percent. So it's not, it's not like we're going to achieve it, we're done, you never have to worry about it. We achieve it, but we will be constantly working to keep it. It's not a one shot deal.
That's right. Can I share my screen again for a moment?
Sure, if that's, if that's helpful, sure.
I think it will be helpful for this particular question of Paul's. It's a very good question. And that's exactly what, uh, we all, uh, worry about. Let me get it into the right view here. Can you see that?
Yeah, that's good.
Paul is absolutely right. Uh, that's the, the game that the forty B law forces us to play. But, uh, consider this, we're just looking for the best possible outcome of it for the town, given the fact that we've got the forty B law, whether we like it or not. Whether, where we stand now, we have about fifteen hundred and seventy homes in Sherburn residential units. That means our requirement is a hundred and fifty seven. We've only got forty eight. We're at three point one percent. We need a hundred and nine more even to get into Safe Harbor for the current decade. It's readjusted, uh, according to the number of homes every decade. So now we're in the twenty twenty decade. If Coolidge Street developments are built, that will add a hundred and thirty units, uh, affordable units, sorry, which brings our total to one seventy eight. So at least until twenty thirty, uh, we're at eleven point five percent. And, uh, of course, uh, it adds, it adds, uh, how much, uh, one hundred and eighty seven to our total number of homes. So our denominator is bigger too. It changes the new ten percent that we are, uh, at, at, at the twenty thirty census. Of course, this is assuming just no other things are built, and of course, Paul's right, they will be. But with the, uh, with these developments, if, if they happen, we'll still be at a hundred and seventy six. Our, our, sorry, our new requirement at twenty thirty will be a hundred and seventy six. Cause we've added, uh, how many homes? We've added a hundred and eighty seven homes. But we'll still be at ten percent. At least that gets us through the, the, uh, twenty thirty decade. In twenty forty, you're right, where will we be? But let's think about the alternate strategy. Say we, uh, build more, uh, twelve unit forty Bs like Fifty Nine North Main, which is a perfectly nice little development, you know, a nice little cluster development. It's twenty five percent affordable. So of those twelve units, only three count towards our S H I. How many of those would we need to build in Sherburn even to fulfill our current, uh, forty B requirement? At least thirty six. It would bring us, give us a hundred and eight more units. So that would get us to ten percent, but that's thirty six more small developments occupying, uh, who knows how much land. And in twenty thirty, we will have added four hundred and thirty two new homes. So our new total number of residences is, the denominator is two thousand two. So our new requirement in twenty thirty will be two hundred homes. And, uh, that will put us back again, will only be at seven point eight percent. So you can see that we'd be playing catch up continually, unless we get a significant sized rental apartment complex built. And basically, that's what this is all about.
Thanks, Marian. Um, okay, so we have a few other, uh, few other, uh, Adam, you still have your hand up. Did you have another comment?
No, I'm sorry.
So, um, Bob, back to you.
Thank you. Um, so I, I agree with all of the maths that Marian just put, put forward. I just want to clarify something, and sometimes people get a little lost on this, but it is a passion of mine, so bear with me. There is a difference between the subsidized housing inventory and our affordable housing inventory in town. Okay, and, and the point really here is that market rate homes, which are rental, count on the S H I, okay? So when we're done with this project, and again, I am in favor of this article, and I'm in favor of this project. However, when we are done, we will have approximately five percent of affordable housing in our town, not ten percent. We will have ten percent on the subsidized housing inventory, but only five percent of actual affordable housing. It is my passion, and I know many people don't like it, but it is my passion to make affordable housing ten percent in our town. Okay, and I just wanted to clarify, because that's a really important, for me, it's an important moral difference. It's, it's, it's legal, the town will be in Safe Harbor, but I personally am not focused on Safe Harbor. I am personally focused on us doing our fair share of having ten percent of affordable housing. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Marian, go ahead.
Well, I think, uh, the thinking behind, uh, making rental units count on the S H I, if they are twenty five percent affordable, all hundred count, is because, uh, in general, people who can't afford a home, to buy a home, especially in a place like Sherburn, uh, can afford to rent an apartment and still get the benefits of the schools and farm pond and everything else. So in a sense, rental units are more affordable than ownership units across the board. But Bob, you're absolutely right, you know, uh, we still are not providing a hundred percent affordable housing, as you know. And, uh, that's, uh, just the economics of, uh, the way it works. And I think the forty B writers, uh, recognize that if they required all new units in a forty B development to be affordable, that none would get built. And that's the, that's the thinking. But, you know, you make a good point, and I agree with you.
Yeah, thanks, Marian. Um, so anybody else for public comments on this round before we close this and move to advisory discussion? Okay, so I will close the first round of public comments and open, um, advisory discussion. I've got a couple of questions, but before getting to those, let me throw it open to anyone else on advisory who has questions, comments. You know, I'll, I'll get to you in a second, Waseem. All right, no, go ahead, Waseem. Never mind. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. So I have a few questions, just clarifications. The commission, any decision by the water district, n- n- needs to, the approval of four out of five members, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
And the the reserved capacity is as of October seventeenth, twenty twenty three. So any projects that, I don't know the timing, that maybe get submitted before then, they are included in the reserved capacity? Is that correct?
The reserve capacity is based on the current use of the property in the district. So, uh, a single family home, uh, for a single family home, they use the standard D E P's, water consumption metric of a hundred and ten gallons per day per bedroom. And that was the basis for determining what the base capacity has to be for that area. Not sure I answered your question, though.
Okay, can I just, uh, throw in, um, it's what's on the ground as of October seventeenth, twenty twenty three, meeting existing uses plus two projects that won't yet have been built. The rental housing project and the senior housing project.
Got it. Yes, yes, okay. So what's on the ground plus these two projects? Thank you for clarifying that. And then the, uh, I think this question was raised, but I want to ask it again and, and, and just make sure I understood the answer. Is it is first come, first served to compete for that excess capacity? How do we make sure that the people who, you know, may want to build, I don't know, an in-law apartment or whatever it is at some later point, are not prevented from doing so by having someone just do, let's say, a forty B, take a lot of that excess capacity and, you know, quite honestly, sell the properties afterwards, right? So, so now the people who are truly owners, who are staying there, are prevented from potentially, let's say, subdividing and building a, a next house next to them or something like that.
Go ahead, Marian.
Yeah, I, I don't have a good answer for that, for that, Waseem. We grappled with that. And, uh, it's, it's impossible to know what people are going to want to do. But I totally agree that if we could, uh, we would reserve some excess capacity for, say, modest improvements, like adding a bedroom or an in-law apartment or an, uh, an accessory apartment. So the, the one thing that we do always have is if this excess capacity is really not sufficient, and we need to get more for, uh, the more modest proposals that we see coming in, uh, we can go back to Framingham and renegotiate the total water. It's not, even though the, uh, IMA is being negotiated now, and we don't want to have to go back continually to renegotiate it. We can do.
Thanks. Um, Nora, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, I was going to ask something else, but while we're on this subject, so are you counting in then? From what I just heard, the twelve units from Mr. Merchison's proposed project, in addition to all the people that currently own houses or that are in that district, say, for example, on Meadowbrook? So including all those right now that aren't tapping into it, those are all counted in, plus the two developments, plus potentially the twelve units?
All the people who live there now for their current use, uh, don't have to tap in now. They can tap in in the future. That's reserved. But the proposal, Mr. Merchison's proposal, uh, is not yet a current use. It hasn't been approved. Uh, it's just a project concept at this point.
Right. Okay, so, um, thank you. My question that I had was actually brought up earlier about sewer betterments. So if I could ask Mr. Mullen a, about that. So for example, I'm just using like on Meadowbrook, will the developer be putting the sewer lines in there with basically, you know, hookups that potentially then they can hook up, and then will that be charged to them as a sewer betterment? I, I know I own a property in South Natick, and when it went down with sixteen, we had a newer septic, you know, thirty years ago, but that was put in, but we were charged a sewer betterment. I think that's what Mr. Merchison was talking about, which was a good question. Are those homeowners going to be having a betterment on that?
So I think this depends in part on the, uh, working out of the development agreement with Toll Brothers. Unless Toll, Toll Brothers is going to put in a main, some main lines for water and sewer from Framingham all the way through to their own two projects. And everything on both sides of that line is going to be entitled to tap in to the extent that we're talking about existing uses. I don't think that the working group has discussed yet, though I, I invite correction if I'm wrong.
though I invite correction if I'm wrong, whether that initial construction by Toll Brothers, which is going to be given to the uh, district would include a, a trunk line down Meadowbrook. Uh, if it were a part of the original construction, then that would not be a uh, a betterment. Instead, anybody on Meadowbrook who wanted to tap in would just pay the fairly nominal cost of doing so. Um, however, if it's not part of the deal with Toll Brothers, the development agreement, uh, then I think that would be a possibly the only major uh, betterment that we might be looking at.
Yeah, Tom, I've been on those discussions with Toll Brothers and Framingham and I do uh, think it's pretty clear that Toll Brothers, it, your second option is what they would go with. I mean, they already are paying a lot of money for betterments within Framingham, let alone all the pipes down Sherburne. And uh, they're not interested in also building a main line down Meadowbrook Road. But uh, we do intend to make sure that they put in a valve and maybe a short connector there so that if people on Meadowbrook wanted to, decided to put a main down, main line down Meadowbrook, uh, it would be much easier to do and they wouldn't have to dig up Coolidge Street. But I've learned something about betterments, this kind of betterment from Jeremy. And uh, he, he can't be here tonight, so I'll try to reconstruct what he's told me. Jeremy, our new town administrator is a civil engineer uh, and has worked for Natick and Framingham, so he knows this stuff pretty well. He told me that uh, to put a line down Meadowbrook, uh, it will be relatively expensive, obviously. It's a main line down the road. And the residents of Meadowbrook would have to make that decision together. They will have to get together and decide whether they are willing to do that. It's not going to be paid for in total by the developer. That will be a betterment uh, down Meadowbrook Road. And according to betterment law, state betterment law, if 50% or more of the residents on Meadowbrook vote to uh, actually do it, then uh, the others have to contribute to the betterment because it will benefit them all. But it takes at least 50% of the residents to be able to uh, decide on that betterment. So then all of the people on Meadowbrook would have to contribute to the main line down Meadowbrook. And on top of that, of course, the individual property owners could decide whether they want to hook up or not. Most of them probably would. But for any uh, for anyone along the main line, or if Meadowbrook has a line for anyone who wants to hook up, it's always going to be a personal cost benefit analysis. You know, if their well is just fine and their septic system is new, they may decide not to. They always have the option to do so in the future.
Thanks. Anybody else? Mike, go ahead.
Great. Thanks, Marion, or maybe Tom. So the, the reserve capacity at a partial level was made non-fungible. It's guaranteed to every homeowner, right? But the excess capacity is, is made fungible and be moved across. Is there a reason why there was that distinction made between reserve and excess? Why one was fungible and the other not?
Uh, in this context, what do you mean exactly by fungible?
Well, that the excess capacity, anyone can, can tap into the excess capacity where the reserve capacity is, is, is isolated to a particular homeowner. What, what, as opposed to every home has 100 gallons of, of reserve and 200 gallons of excess, and there's no excess that's shared broadly?
Oh, yeah, you know, the excess, uh, the reserve capacity is based on uh, the current use of the property. And that is held in reserve and they can, it, it, no one else can use it. So that is property by property reserved. But excess capacity is not allocated to any specific property. It's, it's just hanging out there.
Yeah, and I guess why was that distinction made for excess but not reserve? Why, why is that hanging out there?
Oh, because uh, you know, if, if someone has a property that is totally built out and they'll never use excess capacity, uh, then they have no reason to have it reserved for them. I mean, we didn't even consider doing it that way, but maybe Tom has a better answer.
Well, I was just going to add that the reserve capacity is not reserved on a property by property basis. It's not as if we're saying this house can, will get 100 gallons and that house will get 200 gallons and this one will get 150. It's rather, there is a total amount of capacity that we allocate by, that we, we we deem to be what we need for current uses plus the two new projects. And then we, what we think we have to play with beyond that is the excess. It is the difference between that uh, total amount of committed reserve versus the total amount that we can get from Framingham under the I M A. And we, then the question is, how do we allocate that reserve as new projects come up? And the committee, the, the, the group wrestled with this, but ultimately decided that they didn't want to be the political deciders here. Instead, they would take these projects as they come. And if and when the reserve is exhausted, then the political decision will be made where it should be made, which is a town meeting. The town meeting would need to approve a, an amendment to the I M A. And that, of course, also means that Framingham would have to buy into it.
Uh, Tom, I think you mean, you meant to be talking about the excess capacity, right? Not the reserve.
I'm sorry, the excess capacity.
Yeah.
Okay, but this is going down a path where someone wants to finish their bedroom and has to be approved for, by a town meeting. First to finish their basement.
Uh, well, well, no, the, in the last section of, of last
Assuming, assuming the first mover, you know, consumes all the excess capacity.
Uh, well, the, the la, the end of section 12 says that uh, nothing here is going to require um, uh, any kind of approval uh, for a, the owner of a single or two-family property uh, making minor changes in his property, so long as he doesn't change the use. Um, uh, and, and you're, you're right, I suppose that it is conceivable that whatever number we assign to this reserved capacity might end up being exceeded through my, uh, a number of minor changes in the properties, but I don't know how to avoid that.
I, I think, I think maybe if I could try to rephrase Mike's question, I think it was, you know, why, what was the rationale for not taking the excess capacity? And in that excess capacity, allocating a particular bit to each property. So every property owner would be assured of there's excess capacity to add a bedroom. Um, in contrast to, you know, sort of a first come, first serve, or one large project might use up the excess capacity. And then somebody wants to add a bedroom and there isn't any excess capacity available for them. Mike, is that a fair paraphrase?
Yeah, I, I have to say that that's a, that's a concern that has concerned me a lot too. Uh, if I knew a good way to solve that one. I, I brought it up again just today, actually, but the legislation draft is already out there, so. But you know, a public hearing is a public hearing. We're, we're looking for input. And although it's at this point, I mean, I, I think we still should be able to rethink things that don't look like they're going to work.
Anybody else? Um, I, I, Bob, I want to stick with advisory members and then I'll, I'll come around to another public comment, period. Um, others on advisory? Mary, let me just slip in with a quick question. Um, so let's suppose this article is approved. So what's like the timeline going forward? How would, how would you expect that things would, you know, what, what could realistically be the timeline for how things would play out?
Uh, yeah, do you mind if I just share my screen a bit?
Sure, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll try to be very quick. You see that? Yeah, here's, here's kind of how the timeline works. Um, right now, oh, this is around.
Yeah, over here on the rights. That's the slide we talked about before. Yeah.
There we go, there we go. If we vote yes on October 17th, and we have legislation that we're happy with all around. Uh, the select board will submit it to the state legislature right away. And both our representatives, DeRosa and Becca Roush are expecting it and support the legislation and will help to guide it through committees, but they've told us even though they strongly support it, that getting through the legislative committees will take months, will take months. And the earliest we could expect uh, that we'd have a decision of the legislature would be uh, maybe in the spring, but more likely summer or fall of 2024. But meanwhile, we will be getting other required documents pre-approved. Uh, we'll get five provisional commissioners ready and in place. Uh, we'll get the I M A pre-approved but not signed. Uh, we'll get M W R A applications and approvals done. And other things that just paperwork that's got to be done for this. So then, when the state legislature establishes the water district, um, then we can quickly, M W R I will approve. Uh, the I M A will be ready to sign. We can appoint the district commissioners and building permits can be issued. And as soon as building permits are issued, uh, we will, the affordable housing units will be put on the S H I uh, inventory and we'll have our 11%.
Thanks, thanks. Um, very helpful. Okay, um, so it looks like a couple more advisory comments and then, and then we should do a spinner out and kind of get a sense of where, what everybody's thinking and where, where people stand on this. Uh, Mike, when is, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so just circling back to Mike's uh, question and thought, which seems like a pretty good one to me. Um, you know, is it possible to, to come up with a system um, where the excess excess use is divvied up and, and basically allocated, pre-allocated 100 gallons of excess uh, for each for each home, uh, or you know, whatever the number, the right number is, um, you know, for, for future use. I mean, is, is that, I don't, I just don't know. Is that, is that even possible? Is that something that could be done?
Uh, Tom, I'd like your opinion on this. Uh, I think we've talked about this before and we didn't see a way, but maybe there is.
So one possibility might be to redefine the reserved capacity. Right now, we say, we look at the two projects plus uses as they are in current, currently on the ground. We might say, instead it's the two projects plus what's on the ground and X percent beyond what's on the ground for all those other properties. Because we assume that in the next 10, 20, 25 years, there's going to be some kind of organic growth on the order of, I don't know, 5, 10 percent uh, for the average property. If, if we, if we thereby redefine the reserve, we have some wiggle room for existing property owners to change and expand. And then whatever's, again, the, the difference between that redefined reserve and the total we get from Framingham, that is the excess capacity that we divide up on a first come, first served basis.
Does that sound like it would satisfy uh, your concerns? Michael and and Mike?
I, I, I think so. I, I mean, I, it's, um, you know, not that I love changing uh, something as complicated as this on the fly, and I'll, I'll be interested to hear Bob's thoughts. He, he's certainly very knowledgeable on all these things. Um, but it, it seems at least at first blush to be a, a, an interesting idea worth exploring.
Okay, Waseem, let's come to you.
So I was gonna actually bring up the exact same point that both Mike and Michael brought up. Uh, we, we, I think we did legislation a few years ago where houses can add an accessory uh, right, an accessory unit and, and we have an idea of the organic growth. I heard that word used, the organic growth. Let's say we have the lots and we know what a, an organic growth rate might be. And I do like the idea and support the idea of having uh, you know, like Mike said, the reserve capacity include that. And then the excess capacity is the difference.
Okay, thanks, Waseem. Penn?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, to thank the, you know, Mike and Michael for, for bringing this up. And I, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking that we do have, I, I like the idea of protecting um, and giving a bit of expansion room to, you know, existing property owners, existing, you know, residents here in Sherburne. So I'm, I like the idea of redefining reserve to, you know, give us and them that kind of wiggle room.
Uh, thanks, Penn. Jeff, did you want to get in on this and then, and then I'll come back to Bob Murchison?
Yeah, because I'm gonna be really specific on this. I, I don't support this concept because one, I think we're overthinking it, you know, we don't want to pay for excess capacity that no one's going to use if they're not going to be expanding their home anytime soon. We, we're paying a, a upfront charge for capacity. And then, you know, we want to get the revenue from the gallons that we've negotiated with Framingham, so I, I think there's, you know, most homes don't use the, you know, that whatever Bob or Marion mentioned, 110 gallons per bedroom. That's a crazy number. I, I had seven gallon flush toilets when I moved in and now I have 1.2 gallon or whatever, so. The water you, capacity, I don't think is going to be limiting existing homeowners from adding a apartment or a, you know, a, a bedroom over the garage or whatever. I, I think the capacity will be there and I think this gets to be too fine tuned of a, of a, a motion to, to try and um, separate out existing homeowners' potential future use, which may not materialize.
I mean, I guess, I guess along those lines with the may not materialize. Uh, if, if there is, say, current use plus 10%, some of those homeowners will never use that or never want to use that. And then that's unavailable for any other purpose, even though the town would be paying for it. So that, I guess, would be the another way of phrasing that. Uh, Bob, go ahead. We'll, we'll slightly break our rules here because I think you have something to say that's going to be right on point.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I first, really quickly, Tom, I thought, or, or turning Mullen, I thought that I read in the legislation that the homeowners could add a bedroom here and there um, without dipping into the excess capacity, that that was kind of a by right feature of the legislation. Am I, did I misread that? No, no, you're correct. Um, my point is just that uh, that, that, that actual capacity has to come from somewhere. Ultimately, but the reality, I think, is such that it's, it would not come into play in any realistic scenario over the next 50 years. You know, I, I think realistically, all this has to do with um, just how finally we define the served capacity. Yeah. Yeah, it would be wise to build in some kind of buffer, however modest. Lest we restrict people from doing even minor improvements to their property. Well, what, what I worry about is an issue of fairness, right? Um, so you've got someone with a five-bedroom, 5,000 square.
Five thousand square foot house, um, and somebody else wants to use their land to build a modest two thousand. Uh, foot house by right uh on their property and you're gonna choose one or, or over the other. And I, I think we don't want to get into those kinds of fairness issues. Um, you know, it, it's not about just because we live here today. Um, doesn't mean we have more say in the resources than. You know, some family that would like to come into our community and live in a single, small, single-family home on a by right lot. Um, and so I, I would, I would worry about fairness. I don't know about the law, you know, that's more your, your world attorney Mullen, but. I would worry um that, that there's a fairness issue there about allocating that resource in such a finely tuned way. And as you said, it is available. Nobody's gonna say no. Uh, because it says in the legislation that if I come in and I've got a three-bedroom house and I want to go to a four-bedroom house. They're gonna give it to me and it, it comes out of the reserve. Um, so I, I think it's, this is kind of much ado about nothing.
To, to, Tom, if, if you could just um kind of reaffirm that, that the. Setup is that if somebody wanted to. Add a bedroom, um, that. The way the reserve capacity is currently defined and set up, that. That would be fine and would be, the expectation is that would be approved and it would be fine for a. Future homeowner to do that or a current homeowner to do that in the future.
That's right.
Okay, um, so. Mike and Michael, um. Interested in your reactions to that, whether that alleviates the concern to any degree or if you had another thought on that. So while you guys think about that, let me go to Penn and pick up his comment.
Thank you. I guess the, so I had a clarification question on that. Um, I think we are looking at. The right for a homeowner to do that. Um, is guaranteed, but that doesn't, but only if the water is there for them to do it. So that's my first question for. For Tom Mullen. And then the other thing is, you know, it's. I think that we. You know, conceptually have it, have the question of, do we build in protection for existing, a little bit more protection? For existing property owners or do we leave scope for down the road things? At the price of those things, you know, you know, we, we sort of have to err one side or the other. Either, you know, if we can, you know, we can protect existing property owners. Um, and possibly tie up reserve that, you know. Isn't gonna be used by them. Um, on the other hand, if we. Don't put those, those um protections in, do we run the risk? Of, you know, freezing them, you know, existing property owners out of doing something with. What they, we're doing what they want to do down the road because the reserve has been tapped up. Uh, been, been, been taken up with newer projects, newer homes, newer changes.
Marion, did you want to get in on that?
Uh, yeah, uh, you know, the reserve capacity i- is not as if. Uh, a homeowner has to use a certain amount, I mean, what? The, the homeowners are only paying for the water that they use. Uh, this total capacity thing is just the total amount that Framingham is willing to supply us. But if we don't use it all, we don't pay for it all. There will be a meter at the town line and we. Pay for what we use in terms of water. So there, there is some wiggle room there, but I think um rather than, I, I. The addition of a bedroom, maybe an accessory apartment, I don't think that's where the problem is going to lie. Um, I think the problem is going to lie when some of the larger properties that are not. Owned by wealthy people um want to do a division by right, for example, a. An approval not required division that they have every right to do to, if they have plenty of frontage. To uh divide their property for two or three new single-family homes. And um, that I think is the most likely scenario that we might face. And those single-family homes would not be able to be uh built. If a large development had used all the excess capacity. So, you know, I, I, I really don't know what the. Fairway is to write the legislation to take all these. All these scenarios uh into account. So I appreciate this. This uh discussion a lot. I don't think we have an answer yet.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like from what I've heard that. On the earlier concern that was raised about could somebody add a bedroom? Uh, it sounds like that's really not a concern. Um, cuz that is in what's currently envisioned, that's gonna be quite feasible. As you were saying though, Marion, it sounds like the, the crunch or the bind would be, as you said, if. Say a, a large landowner that, a large-ish landowner that currently has one home on their property and they wanna. Sell out some lot, subdivide. Um, it's possible that that wouldn't be just a little more water, like an extra bedroom, that would be a significant amount of additional water. And then if there isn't excess capacity, some prior project had taken it. That's where there might be a, a crunch as compared to just the person in their home who wants to add a, add a bedroom.
That's right. That's where I see the problem.
Okay, um, all right, so I do wanna, I see a bunch of other hands. I do wanna, given the time, try to. Draw this to a close, so. Let me ask the people who still have hands up to, if, if you could, try to keep comments brief cuz I want to get back to kind of taking the temperature of everyone on advisory and then. You know, getting us, getting us, see if, if there's a, see if there's a majority for a motion and kind of getting us, getting us along. Uh, some of you may have seen a few minutes ago, the dog behind me fell asleep, so I think, you know, we, we weren't, we weren't keeping my dog engaged. And now I think he's run off to the bedroom with Sam and probably done for the night. Um, I was hoping he'd stay for the duration of the meeting, but I don't, I don't think I managed that. Um, okay, so. Um, let's just pick up some final comments and then let's, let's try to come to the end of uh the advisory session. So Steve, did you want to jump in?
Um, yeah, thanks. It's kind of just a quick follow-up question to that scenario that Marion is. Um, put up where somebody wants to subdivide their land as an A and R and, you know, can't because the excess capacity is uh used up. But they could build a house and just put in a private well and sewer, I mean, septic, right? So, so it doesn't actually stop anybody from doing what they can do by right anyways, right now. You know, so really, we're only talking about a scenario where the general chemicals plume has actually rendered all of this land essentially useless for a private well. Um, but otherwise, landowners can still do what they want with their land. The only thing that they wouldn't be able to do is to tie into this. Water main from Framingham, so. So, so I, again, I, I do think that um, you know, we aren't severely restricting landowners' rights to do the things that they're allowed to.
Yeah, thanks. That's, that's helpful. Um, uh, Mary Moore, did you wanna jump in?
Thanks, Danny. I'll be super quick. Um, just for um point of reference, um, Brian and I lived in South Natick when the sewer came in. And we had just bought a house and they had just put in a new septic, and so we didn't need to connect to it, but we did end up paying a betterment. And um, I can tell you that um, once the sewer came in, everybody built up, everybody built out. There was a lot of, you know, expansion going on because they didn't need to um abide by Title V anymore, and so. I think, you know, we should expect that there will be a lot of pressure for um additions, for um expansion, whether it's new lots and A and R. Um, there will be, you know, increased development um that's gonna come, so I just think, you know, we need to be eyes wide open about that. And I, I don't think that any of the homeowners who live in that area should be at any um disadvantage. From doing what they can do once the sewer and water comes in as anybody else should be able to do.
Thanks, thanks, Mary. Um, Wassim?
Yeah, a quick question to Jeff. Jeff, you'd mentioned that we don't want to pay. Uh, Framingham for the reserved capacity if we're not gonna use it. Uh, I just wanted to clarify. That we actually don't pay, right? I mean, this is, this is gonna be a water district, right? Uh, i- i- you know, what we obtained from Framingham in terms of reserves, there is, it's, it's guaranteed, but. It's really paper use. Is that correct?
Well, we're, we're paying for the pipeline, the, the developers paying for the pipeline, but we also have, I believe, you can correct me, Mary, I believe there's a fee for. Capacity fee initially, and then you pay for use. So there is a fee that's based on how large of a IMA we want to have with Framingham. And then there's a fee for use subsequent to that. But my point is, we don't want to put in more capacity than we need. We, we're doing this for a reason and we can always add capacity in the future if we need to, so we. We're providing for existing use, we're, we're providing for Meadowbrook, which, you know, may not connect for quite a while, so. I, I think we're, again, overthinking this, in my view. I think we'll, I think we'll get there and we can adjust with Framingham over time if we have to.
I, I, you know, I would just.
Out of I answered that, would I answer Wassim? Uh, that was.
Uh, I think you did. I think you did. All right.
I, I was just gonna build on what Jeff said, it just to, to offer the thought that. You know, the main reason for setting up the water district is to enable. The Meadowbrook Commons and Coolidge Crossing, um, and to enable those two large projects. A side benefit of that is that water becomes available to other homeowners in the district. Um, which, you know, currently they don't have access to, but they. Would potentially, if they wanted, have access to that in the future. So. There's a sense in which I think we're having a conversation about fine tuning, you know, exactly how that benefit might be allocated. But as I think about the bigger picture, the bigger picture is. Do we want to enable these two large developments to go and provide the benefit for current homeowners in the district of the. Um, potential access to water. Um, and, you know, the water will still be a limited resource, so there may be scenarios like the one that. Marion mentioned or Steve talked about where if a homeowner wanted to subdivide. Maybe they couldn't do that with water and sewer, it would have to be done, um, you know, the old-fashioned way and while it's septic, but that's where they are now. So I just, I just say that cuz I didn't want to get. Too, too absorbed in this set of issues and forget about the big picture. Of trying to enable these two large projects to move forward. All right. Um, again, quick, quick comments, Penn, and then Paul, and then let's do a go around and kind of see what people are thinking.
Thanks, Dan. So just to, actually a quick que- question for clarification. You know, what we were talking about was redefining the reserve versus the excess. And my understanding is that would not require us to require greater capacity. It would just be a respecifying of where the capacity we've chosen would be going to allow a little more. Uh, uh, reserve for existing homeowners. Am I stating that correctly?
I, I believe so. Uh, that's the way I understood it. I should, I'm double checking with Tom.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, but uh, another thing to bear in mind is that we're not negotiating the IMA here, we're negotiating the legislation. And the legislation doesn't specify. How much is, well, it, yes, it does actually, it says for current use. Um, it, it. The legislation uh guarantees access to enough water for the current use. That is the number of bedrooms you have now at a hundred and ten gallons per. Um, I'm trying to see if there's a way that. We could um, you know, put more of the weight of that allocation on the. On the IMA, but no, I guess it has to be in the legislation. Sorry, I'm thinking out loud, so I'll put my head.
Uh, all right, Paul, quick comment and then let's do a go around here.
So I wanted to, to reinforce what you said, Dan, you almost took the words right out of my mouth. Which is that. This is, there's a saying about perfect is the enemy of good. And what I'm hearing is that, gee, I think everybody has all these good ideas about making this perfect. But at the end of the day. We want to achieve our ten percent. In order to achieve our ten percent, we have a real chance of doing that, particularly with these two projects. And therefore, there's a lot of good in addition to providing. Benefits to the homeowners in this area. There's also an issue of, of a, a toxic plume that's coming from, from a, a general chemical. This is gonna provide protection for that, so there's a lot of good reasons to get this done. In, in my role as a lawyer for municipalities, many times, we get legislation enacted. And then we go back and we change it. And so it's not like one shot and you're, you're locked in. And there's never anything further. We need the legislation, a lot of work has been done, good people have worked on it. We've got to get this thing passed. If we want to make changes to it. The door is open to do that again. And we can come back even at the uh annual town meeting with a. Uh, supplemental bill that will change. Bits and pieces of it. So I'm saying, let's get this done, let's get this approved, let's get these projects on track to. To provide all of those good benefits. And not try to get action right now at this hearing on every little detail.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, so let's kind of take temperature. I think I sort of, probably from my comments, made. Pretty clear my sense that I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with this. Um, might be interesting for the working group to. Spend a little time thinking about this in the next, uh, next week. Um, but along the lines that Paul said, I'm pretty comfortable with this cuz I'm pretty. Uh, I'm very supportive of these two projects and see this as an essential step to uh getting there. Um, so let's see, um, Mike, Mike Winters, do you wanna kind of tell us where you are and what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want any of this to uh derail the projects. I think that. All of this, I, I'm in favor of, um, you know, I'm. I would like to continue to think about maybe a, a tweak uh that, that might be possible, but um, you know. I don't think any of this would result in the no vote from me tonight.
Okay, thanks. Nora, what are you thinking?
I will be voting yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, Wassim, what are you thinking?
Just echo what uh Michael said.
Okay, thanks. Um, Shelley, where are you on this? You're muted. There you go.
There I am. Okay, awesome. Um, yeah, I, I'm in support of the creation of the water district.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mike Flanagan, what are you thinking?
I mean, I like this whole thing to move forward as well. Um, just the, it seems like I, I'm still a little, it's not obvious to me. The um, the downsides to what Tom proposed was just a couple of words, redefining reserve capacity. Uh, it's not obvious to me what. What the downside from that is and for anyone, um, in providing some more protections for those residents on, in Meadowbrook and Coolidge, so. Um, happy to be convinced otherwise, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, Paul?
I'm in favor of the proposal, yeah.
Okay, um, I think Natalie's didn't get back to us. Um, Penn?
Um, I'm sort of, I'm with Mike and Michael. I'm, I'm in favor of the proposal. Um, but I would be happier if there were still some scope for, you know, tweaking the language as we talked about on the reserve.
Okay, okay, thanks. And as I said at the outset, I'm. I'm in favor of this, uh, and you know, would. I think I'd be comfortable leaving it in the hands of the working group to think through whether there's something that'd be sensible here, but it sounds like there's a little bit of a difference of you, of you there. Okay. So just to keep this all formal and on track. Um, I will formally close the uh advisory discussion session, which turned into a very fulsome discussion. Um, let me open the second public hearing session, again, just to do this all according to the rules. Um, and then we'll get to an advisory voting session and see if we can find a, a language that, uh, that, that works. Um, anything else on public comment from anybody? Uh, Brian, go ahead, please. And again, name and address and so on, just.
Yes, good evening. Hi, Dan. Brian Moore, forty-nine Farm Road.
Yes. Good evening. Hi, Dan. Brian Moore, forty-nine Farm Road. Um.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too, Dan. You guys have had a long discussion tonight. I would like to commend all of your attendance, all of your attention, and all of your volunteer work. It is a very tough job, and it's a tough decision, but uh, I'm very, very proud to live in a community where people volunteer their time in such a way. And I appreciate all of your time if no one else does. So thank you for your time tonight.
Um, thanks, Brian. I have to say at, uh, ten thirty-one, that makes me feel good. Thank you. Uh, you know, I said my dog already bailed on us, so, uh, you know. Um, okay. Um, anybody else with public comment? Okay, so I will close the second public comment period. We will come to, uh, an advisory, uh, our, our advisory voting session. So we should Oh, Jeff, I didn't give you a chance. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna interrupt you.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's roll back and, uh, why don't you share with us where the select board is on this? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I think we should ju- uh, just focus on the big picture. What we're voting on is establishing a water district. You know, all the details will be worked out by the commission, I think. Um, so the select board voted four is, uh, in favor and one a person not present. So it's four to zero in favor of establishing North River Water District.
Okay, thanks, Jeff, and apologies for getting late and I'm losing track of things. Um, okay, so then coming to advisory voting session. Um, so I, I think, you know, we have a, a decision here to make about what sort of language we'd want, whether we would want to um, you know, recommend favorable action and with kind of a understanding that the um, the working group would think about this issue more, or if we want to I didn't hear anybody who was opposed to this, so, you know, I'll totally recommend favorable action with some additional phrase that, um, you know, said something a little stronger than just kind of, uh, uh, push to the, um, uh, work, you know, to the working group to think about this a little bit in the next week or so. So what are, what are people thinking about what would be good language? Or are people comfortable with just a straight recommend favorable, as I said? Mike Flanagan, you just unmuted. Do you want to go ahead?
Well, I just, um, I mean, the last article, we voted with new language because we didn't want to trust the planning board to make all the right decisions. So I'm, you know, playing, uh, fair here, um, hesitant to to, to, to go against that. So if we had, you know, voted but had some, I mean, Tom, Tom seemed to shoot it off his hip there, what, like three words, I thought that, um, seemed to be, uh, maybe solve this issue. Um, maybe he wants to, Tom could repeat that. It seemed again, I, if there's down, if there's other risks here or downsides of either Toll Brothers or other residents, I'm, it's not obvious to me. So um, happy to be, again, persuaded that there is downsides to what Tom had proposed.
Bob, do you want to just repeat, uh, what you had said? You're muted, you're muted.
Sorry, I had just suggested that we might redefine the term reserved capacity uh, to provide that it, um, reflects, um, the, uh, uses actually in effect uh, on properties in the district as of October seventeen. Uh, plus some modest percentage in addition to that to reflect anticipated organic growth. What that percentage is, I have no idea.
The, 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 the percentage now is zero, is that right?
That's right.
Yeah.
So no, no, no bedrooms could be added right now for any homeowner if there's no excess capacity?
I, I.
Well, the, the, the legislation provides that a bedroom could be added as of right. And, but it doesn't say where the capacity comes from. Presumably, we would be at some point eating into what we have called the excess capacity.
I, I had understood our earlier discussion to be that in reality, if somebody wanted to add a bedroom, that wasn't going to be an issue. And so a language tweak wouldn't be necessary just for somebody to add a bedroom, not, not say that a language tweak is a bad idea, but I didn't understand that we would need a language tweak for somebody to be able to add a bedroom onto, uh, onto a home. It was Marion's scenario of subdivision, multiple homes where there'd be a crunch.
We. I think a problem here is that we haven't defined organic. What's organic growth? Like, would, uh, may, dividing a lot into A and R lots, which is very common, would that be organic?
No, that, that's dealt with separately as something that has to come out of the excess capacity.
Okay.
So could I suggest some language?
Yeah, go ahead. What were you?
With a redefinition of reserve capacity to provide for organic growth to be determined by the new commission.
Just writing notes here. Um, so Marion or others who are involved in the working group, Tom, does that seem workable?
Could you say that once more, Paul?
To, to, uh, vote a fir- uh, affirmative action or favorable action with a redefinition of reserve capacity to provide for organic growth as defined by the new commission. The theory being is the, if I could argue in favor of this language, it's the new commission who are really the experts, who will be the experts. And it includes the, the two major developers. The two major projects. It, it's rather than our struggling to figure out what is organic growth or the voters at town meeting. But we leave it to the commission.
I'm quite happy with that. I think it's solomonic.
Marion, is another person involved in the working group, uh, reaction to that?
Uh, yeah, it, it, uh, definitely gives some wiggle room and allows for a lot more thinking, which I think we need before we have this in stone.
Mike Flanagan, what do you think?
I mean, I think it's a step. I don't want to belabor the point. I, I don't know if the water district represents the individual homeowners as much as the large developments there. Um, so they may not be, um, as incentivized to have more organic growth. I just want people to be able, if you're, if you're on Coltrane Meadowbrook, to be able to add a bedroom or two or maybe three. Um, as of now, it's a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom. You have four bedrooms, you have four hundred and forty gallons. You can't add a single bedroom, as far as I understand. Because you go above four forty. And so to provide some buffer seems totally reasonable for those folks in this area. And, uh, yeah, I, I again, I don't, I don't see why this is a big issue.
I think it, it strikes me the challenge is you know, trying to think through, you know, what that buffer would be, and would it be two percent, five percent, fifty gallons? And I think we're not at least I don't feel equipped to do that tonight, which is why I thought Paul's thing was sort of interesting is kind of a, yeah, we should have a buffer and you know, as Marion said, it's going to require some thought to figure out what's the right, you know, the right way to do it. Cause I don't think, I don't think we're gonna have the expertise to, you know, decide how many extra gallons that would be per, per, you know.
That's fair. Yeah, that's fair.
Um, okay, uh, um, Mike Winters, what are you thinking?
I'm, I'm actually more in favor of, um, something that you mentioned before is, is pushing it back towards the working committee because they, they are really, you know, knee deep in this whole thing. Um, so they're, they're probably best equipped over the next week or two to um, you know, really take a second crack, second look at the, at the language and, and come up with, with something before the town meeting.
Set, Tom, Mary, does that seem like a feasible option?
Uh, it's not very, it's not a very long time.
No, it's not.
Uh, I'd rather it, whatever language we can find, you know, along maybe the, the line of what Paul says that just provides some flexibility, so we don't have to have it all figured out right now.
Okay, okay. Um, Wassim?
So we don't have a motion right now.
No, we don't. We're just talking about.
I was, I was actually, I wanted to make a motion to support the, uh, article as written. If you had, you know, asked me to speak ten minutes ago, I would made a motion ten minutes ago.
Okay, um, so Wassim's made that motion. Um, is there a second? Not hearing a second. So it sounds like, Wassim, that isn't quite where people want to go. Um, anybody else with a motion? Penn?
You like, I'd like to make a motion. I'm not sure if I'm phrasing this correctly. Um, to, um, go forward with, um, the article with the change in language, uh, along the lines that, uh, Paul suggested. I'm sure I'm not phrasing that correctly, but.
Yeah. Yeah. No, that's good. And, and, and that, that language, I was writing it down. Paul, correct me if I don't get it right. Was recommended approval with, um, a suggestion or subject to, uh, reserve capacity being redefined to allow organic growth as determined, um, by the as determined by the new, uh, new commission or by the district commission. Okay, so that ends motion. Is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
You'll second the motion as well.
Yeah, okay. Um, we just keep track of this. Okay, um, so discussion on that. And Bob, you've been patient. If you want to just jump in with a quick comment, and then we'll carry on with that discussion on that motion.
Sure. Unfortunately, I think where you're going, uh, with this is to a very vague. Uh, to, to a very vague term in the legislation. And I think you're inviting litigation and you're inviting a challenge to fairness and all kinds of other things. You, what you had was well defined. It was clear to everyone. And so often, we do things in town that aren't clear, and I think this is a mistake. I, I don't object to your considering this, although I think it's a, it's a meaningless thing in reality. It's a, it's a theoretical concern, not a real concern. Um, and I think you're, you're making a vague law that will be subject to challenge, and that's not healthy.
Okay, thanks. Um, other discussion of the motion before we vote? Okay.
Like, can I just say one thing? I think a lot of this, I don't want to say it's, it's moot because it isn't. But at the end of the day, if you're adding a bedroom, I just have to say it. You, you'd have to, if you have a failed septic or have to improve the septic, it comes down to doing the sewer then first. I mean, I'm just saying that there's like a lot more to that, unless they want to put a new septic in. I'm just thinking of people in Meadowbrook, but that's, you know, just, I just wanted to point that out. And that's like a big, to me, a big number that the people say, for example, Meadowbrook are going to have to, that's a challenge. Is the sewer hookup and the cost.
So, so sorry, Nora. I didn't exactly capture the point.
Um, just the water is important. I, I get that, but I'm just saying that there's more hoops to go through before somebody adds a bedroom and worrying about the water in terms of.
My, my, my impression is Marion can maybe help, help us on this, but my impression is that even though we've been talking about water, um, really, we're talking about water and sewer capacity. So that, you know, these is that, is that right, Marion?
Uh, yeah, we have, but I think Nor- Nora makes a good point, uh, because if someone does want to, uh, add a bedroom, they go through Board of Health. And, uh, Board of Health has criteria for new bedroom. I mean, there are going to be people who maybe want the water, but want to use their septic system.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, okay. All right. Okay, good, good to know. All right. Well, so let's, um, so let's, uh, let's, let's vote. Um, on, uh, this is, um, Penn's motion. Uh, so, let's see, Wassim?
Uh, I am concerned with the putting something, namely a reserved capacity, that is not defined right now. It's going to be defined down the road, so I'll vote nay.
Okay. Um, Mike Flanagan?
I'll support it.
Okay. Uh, Paul?
So I support it.
Uh, Nora?
I support it.
Uh, Shelley?
I'm in support.
Uh, uh, Mike Winters?
Um, I vote nay because I would, I, I would like to have better language, um, added, uh, regarding the reserve issue.
Me- meaning more specific language?
Correct.
Okay, um, Penn?
I support it.
Um, and I'm also a yes. So that gets us to one, two, three, four, five, six, six to six to two. Okay. Um, so we got there. Little complicated, but, um, we got there with, uh, what advisories recommendation will, um, will be. Um, okay, so I think that gets us to the end of our business. Um, I think in just a second, we will adjourn. But I am thinking that Planning Board and Select Board might want to adjourn their meeting first.
Um, thank you very much. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Addie?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Rob? Rob Wolfson?
Chris, can you second? I think you can second it, right?
Second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chris is an aye. Addie may.
Addie may is aye.
Um, advisory, thank you very much. You guys did a great job.
Uh, thanks for your, both of your contributions tonight. Very much appreciated.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Jeff?
I'll make the same motion of a select board motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thank you, Dan.
All right, thanks. Um, so just before we on advisory adjourn, right, so the process now is, uh, I will put together a first draft of our report, which then will circulate amongst advisory to you know, make sure that everybody is either on board with that or that we make whatever changes we need to make to get everybody on, on board with that. Normally, and in the spring, we'll have different people write up, uh, do the write-ups for different articles. Um, uh, I think, given the time constraints and there aren't that many articles, probably most efficient for me to just take a first shot at it and then share it with people to, uh, to edit. And on the fifth article, um, uh, Mike and Wassim, if you wanted to do a minority report, you could. Uh, I'm guessing that the overall write-up is going to touch on all of these issues, but, you know, just think of keeping the back of your mind, that's a possibility if you want. All right, that being said, um, I should also mention, I think we're set to meet next week when I think we're going to start talking about budget guidance and cost of living increases. Uh, so we'll have another interesting set of uh topics to discuss. All right, all that being said, I would happily entertain a motion to uh adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, and let's uh, let's just do a quick uh vote on that. I'm just getting my notes here. Uh Wassim?
Aye.
Uh, Mike Flanagan? Was that a yes?
Yes, aye, yep.
Oh, yeah, thanks. On Paul?
Aye.
Uh, Nora?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Uh, Mike W?
Aye.
Penn?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience and slogging through and contributions. Um, went on a little longer than I'd expected, but I thought it was a really um interesting and valuable conversation. Um, so I will have a draft out before long and I'll see everybody next week.